We're just making sure the trustee Ward's microphone's working before we get going. Little bit of a technical glitch. All right, we're fixed. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna start off with some introductions. So to my far right, we have trustee Ward, followed by trustee Pearl, and we have vice chair Coburn. And to my immediate right, we have superintendent Greg Stewart, who will be here. Myself, I'm chair Megan Dyken. To my left, we have secretary treasurer Ryan Isley. And to my further left, we have trustee Todd, followed by trustee Ross, followed by trustee Wilson. And we're gonna go over to our partner groups. We have some new faces there. So welcome from QP eighteen fifty-one, we have Carrie Schaefer. And we have from QP twelve sixty, Charlotte Major. Are you, do you have your new president?
Well, she's not our new president yet.
Okay.
Not until the end of June, but she will be.
Okay, please introduce our incoming.
Hi, my name is Reagan Schwa. I'm new to Langley, not new to B C, but I'm new to Langley. I'm a chair, and I look forward to getting to know everybody and working with them at Shergots. And we have one else before the last.
Well, welcome. Congratulations. And then we have our president Wendy Cook from the LTA. And our vice president, who is incoming, correct? Tanya Kerr with LTA also? Not till the end of June, sorry.
Don't strip me of that.
No, 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 we, we're excited. Our numbers are up higher than ever. Well, unfortunately, regrets were sent from TPAC. And then we have from the Langley Principals and Vice Principals Association, John Pusek. And at the very back, we have IT Technical Sport Dale Boe. And then we have communications manager Joe Upshiner. Executive assistant Lori Mason. Assistant superintendent Barry Bunyan. Assistant superintendent Mal Gill at the back. Another assistant superintendent Woody Bradford. We have our assistant secretary treasurer Shin Chan. And that would be everybody here in attendance. So given that, I will call the meeting to order at seven ten P M. And we will remind everybody with the audio visual. As per policy twelve oh four, bylaws of the board, the regular meeting of the board will be recorded and may be streamed live, archived, and accessed online. The board also reserves the right to edit or by motion of the board at any meeting. Choose not to stream live or archive a meeting or portion thereof. And I would also like to acknowledge that the Langley School District is located on the traditional lands of the Quantland, Kansai, Matzki, Semiamu First Nations. And we now need a report from in camera vice chair Coburn.
In camera, we discussed property, personnel, and legal.
And we will move into item five, which is our consent agenda. Could I please get a mover that the Board of Education adopts the consent agenda items as provided? Moved by trustee Ward, or geez, sorry, we're off to a good start. Moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Todd. Any comments, questions? Yes.
Question. Question through the chair. I've just looked over locally approved titles and ten of them are actually by Amazon or produced by Amazon, so I was just.
Would you like to pull that off?
Well, can I ask a question about?
So a consent agenda is approved by consent. And any trustee may at any time ask for an item to be pulled off the consent agenda. And it does seem as though you have some questions about that. So let's move that down under superintendents items. So it will become eight point one point three. All right, any other questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as amended. The motion is carried. All right, so we are now on to consideration of the agenda. So are there any additions or changes of order to the agenda? So trustee Todd?
Yes, I'll be moving a motion under new business.
Okay.
Nine point one.
All right, and any other additions to the agenda? Trustee Ross?
Yeah, I'll be putting a motion in under new business as well.
All right, and we will be adding, which came out of in camera, will be going on to the agenda under new business is the Langley Teachers Association letter. So we'll have under new business nine point one, which is David Todd's motion he'll be bringing, nine point two, which will be trustee Ross's, and nine point three, which will be a letter with the LTA. Any changes of order on the agenda? Okay, could I please get a mover for the agenda? Moved by trustee Ross, seconded by trustee Ward. All those in favor of, oh, oh, sorry, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended. Motion's carried. All right, so we have moved on now to the secretary treasurer's reports. We're on to item seven point one point one, which is the annual facilities grant. Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your package, you have the annual facilities grant proposal that we will be sharing with you tonight to send into the ministry so that we can access the funds for those projects. The annual facilities grant is a fund set up from the ministry to work on the facilities. And it runs from the ministry fiscal year, which is April one to March thirty-first. Our funding this year is the same amount of funding that we received last year. They split that between their capital fund and operating fund. And that's just, we get it in a lump sum of three point three million dollars. Out of that, we have to pay for the CAMs, which is their capital asset management system, which is a requirement from the ministry that we use that. So our net amount is three point two eight five six oh five million dollars that we will be able to use to upgrade our facilities. As you can see in the plan, the bulk of these are things for like roof replacements, some mechanical systems, some exterior painting. Those are some of the larger projects that we'll be able to do for various sites within the district. You also have attached the policy on this annual facilities grant, which outlines what it can and can't be used for, as well as the letter that we have received from the ministry on the annual facilities grant and the table that shows our allocation. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Wonderful. Do you have a speaker system? So I will move to our first speaker, which is trustee Todd.
Thank you, Chair. I did have one question. I noticed that we're replacing some hot water tanks and boiler upgrades and that. Anytime we enter into something like that, I'm assuming that we go to a more energy efficient model? Is that correct? That actually burns less natural gas or, you know, along those lines? Just to lower our costs in the long run?
Yeah, part of the projects that we do are always to make the more efficiency. We do have carbon footprint targets that we need to achieve. We do that with all of our projects for boilers, hot water tanks. Even on the electrical side, we're always trying to do that. We do have to keep track of that, and as we do, need to report that on an annual basis.
Thank you. I have trustee Ward now.
Did I do it right? Okay. So with respect to a couple of line items here, obviously, they're all even dollar values. You know, gym floor replacement, one hundred eighty-five thousand at Brookswood Secondary. So I understand that. But with respect to Walnut Grove Secondary and RE Mountain, so one's parking lots and the other one's repaving. So those are very round numbers, hundred thousand and two hundred thousand respectively. What does that entail? And before you put it on here, does it, do you define the parameters? Or it's just kind of a bulk number?
These are estimates from our facilities department based on their assessment of the needs for those sites. And then once this is done, it goes out to tender to get more definitive budget and actual dollar amounts for them.
All right, thank you. I do not see any further speakers. I do have a question. So my question is related to, under the list of projects, one of them is related to schools with accessibility. So accessibility for persons with disabilities. Now, I'm wondering with that, do we have other schools that are still not accessible? And if so, do we have a timeline or plan to make them accessible? And are we able finally to access some of the federal funds that were made available for accessibility and under these circumstances?
We have had funds in the past on accessibility. Those have done based on specific student needs or staffing needs. These are just, would be ones that are in line with the needs from students or staff.
Okay, thank you. Can I just follow up on that and ask? Is, is, is it something that has been looked at? There seems to be a push for universal access to buildings. And I understand the need to meet individual students' needs. That's just equally as important. But has there been a view of our facilities? Some of them are quite dated. Where we would be looking sort of district-wide to allow our facilities to be more accessible? Or is that something that's been done in any other districts?
I do not know the answer to that question. Would have to get facilities to look into that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, trustee Pearl.
ACSS in Brookswood there allocated? What is, what does fire safety plan mean?
I'd have to get more details on that specific project. I don't have that information right now.
Couldn't we bring that through trustee memo?
Can do that, yes.
Thank you, Speaker.
And the last speaker I have is trustee Ward.
Just gonna comment on that. I don't know if it's not my position, but fire safety plans are per building, my understanding. And you, there's a, there's a cost to get them assessed, to develop a plan for the building. And it could be in the thousands of dollars. I don't know. It probably is, you know, for a couple of buildings there. But I did have one other question, just as far as creating the driver here. So when you develop these numbers and the estimated costs, so staff, whether it be facilities or whoever it might be as it pertains to these things, what would be facilities? Or maintenance? How do they make the assessment? What's, how does it, what's the start and endpoint? They come up with a plan for, back to the paving? Do they go, okay, we've done an assessment in this certain area. We see alligator cracking with the asphalt. And there's a rough, certain number of square meters. And they do a cost per square meter based on previous paving? Or how do they make the assessment to say, okay, this is what? Where does it start, I guess, is what I'm asking? Where they arrive at those kind of generalized costs?
So they do an assessment of the facilities and the ones that need repair. Obviously, we can't do all the projects that are needed with the funds that are provided for this. So they look at the ones that are in the most need. And then they do an estimate based on past experience on the scope and size of what they're able to see without going into a far more detailed costing. Because there's no way to cost out all of these projects because they're bundled. So a lot of this has to go through a tender process. So like all the roofing stuff, the painting, the larger projects do have onsite visits. And it would be a tender process with multiple people competing and putting in applications for that work.
Thank you. I do not have any further speakers on this motion. So the motion, well, we don't have a motion yet, but on the subject. The motion that has been reported as a recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the annual facilities grant of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty spending plan as presented. May I get a mover, please? Moved by trustee Ward, seconded by trustee Todd. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. The next item is seven point one point two, and it's the annual budget bylaw, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, first and second reading. Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you. First want to start off by thanking assistant secretary treasurer Shin Chan for the bulk of the work in putting together this budget for him and his staff and the things that they've done and the effort that has gone into this over the last couple of months. So thank you for assisting and hopefully making me look good tonight. No pressure, that's right. Does it go on? Okay. Under legislative authority, there, one of the requirements of a school board is to pass a budget every year that is required to be submitted to the ministry by June thirtieth of each year. That, and it needs to be presented in the format that is required, which is currently the P SAB requirements, which was implemented in two thousand and twelve. That format is made up of two statements and four schedules. The two statements are a combination of all the funds. The requirement is now that boards do a budget that encompass all the funds that they are responsible for. And then the schedules are basically the more detailed breakdowns of the individual funds. The one being the bulk being the operating, which are our Schedule II statements. Wanted to start off with some of the budget assumptions that we've implemented. And you'll see some of these reoccurring as we go through some more detailed analysis for you. Our enrollment has increased two hundred and thirty-one point seven five F T up to twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty-six. We are opening up a new secondary school this September, which is exciting for this district. It has quite a bit of budgetary impacts. We have a lot of the infrastructure costs that get added to a very large building without a large enrollment increase. So you can see we've increased two hundred and thirty students, but we've added a building that has seventeen hundred capacity. And you have to build the staffing and the infrastructure and the cost side for it. So that has been a big part of our budget this year. Our ISP enrollment has decreased slightly from nine hundred ninety-eight and a half to nine ninety. The nine ninety is the same target that we had last year that we slightly overachieved. So we've just brought it back in line with the estimates that we had when we started the year. Our average teacher cost has gone up just over two thousand dollars. And there's a few things that are in there. There's the impact of the full year of the healthcare tax and the partial year of the MSP, which is coming to cost the district. The, we've also looked at taking some pension, or sorry, some benefit premium holidays. We had done this last year as well. So there will be a similar premium holidays for some of our partner groups. And more information will be shared with them in the coming months. Then we have the teacher pension that changed last year. So we took a part of that in our budget when we did the amended last year. But there was still another four months for this year that we've now incorporated for the full year impact of that. We have the benefit cost increase. We have impacts of late starts or full year impacts of positions that were missing parts of the year during last year. We've removed any one-time items. And we have all the contractual increases in the collective agreements that have kicked in, as well as increases for exempt and our admin group. So this is statement two. As you can see, it's the total budget that we'll be talking about for the district, broken down by the funds. And I'll go into more details in the individual funds. So I won't spend a lot of time on this slide. But wanted to show this. You can see at the top there that our total revenue is just over two point four seven, two hundred forty-seven million, with our expenses at two hundred fifty-one point four million dollars. So as a deficit of just over two million dollars. That's mainly in the capital account when you look at that. And that's just because of the way that we have to account for the timing of revenues and the expenses on the capital side. You can see there on the operating side that we are needing to appropriate two point, two million one hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars to balance our operating budget. And I'll give you more details as to what makes that up and how that is accounted for. This slide here is the bylaw that the board is going to be asked to do the first and second readings tonight. So that bylaw will be two hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-four, five hundred eighty-two, made up of all of the three funds. Clicker's being sticky tonight. Bulk of the time we'll be spending is on the Schedule II statements, which is the operating grant, which is our day-to-day operations of the district. Our operating fund, as you can see, is a comparison to what we had done in the amended budget. We have revenues that are now up just under six point nine million dollars. Our expenditures up just over six point six million dollars. And our deficit just increasing about two hundred forty-one thousand dollars. But our appropriation is down a million dollars. Part of that difference is the fact that our transfers from local capital, the capital items that we're paying for out of our operating funds is down by seven hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. So on the revenue side, the Ministry of Education, our operating grant is our largest piece of our revenue at one hundred ninety-one million dollars. You can see that's up just under six million dollars. The next biggest piece is our tuition revenues, and that's up seven hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. Then our investment income has gone up two hundred thousand. I have slides on most of these to show more detail. The investment income is due to the higher interest rates and us putting more money into the ministry central deposit system. They have a system where to offset some of the borrowing that the province does, they encourage school districts to put it into a government account, basically, that we can recover in forty-eight hours. And they offer better rates than what the bank rates typically do because they can offset that against their borrowing costs. So it's a good deal for districts, and it's a good deal for the province because it lowers the debt that they have to fund at a provincial level and gives benefits to the district. Bit of a busy slide, but this is our provincial grant funding. You can see that for our enrollment, we are up two point six million dollars. Our unique students is up two million dollars. The others are pretty constant. So our operating grant is up four point six, and I'll show another slide on that as well. You can look at our other grants that we receive. The biggest one there is the employer healthcare tax. That is a special grant that the ministry has implemented at the end of this fiscal year. They implemented a partial grant for the cost for this year to offset some of the costs that districts have incorporated in the transition between the MSP payments and the healthcare tax. And they have implemented another grant for the next school year to cover part of those as well. It does not cover the full bill to the district, but does cover about eighty-eight percent of it, which is in line with what other districts have been seeing as well. The ongoing costs, they have said, will be rolled into the per-student allocations after this year, once we get to a stable just the healthcare tax. Wanted to talk a little bit about the funding that has changed a little bit and how they've allocated the funding for the collective agreements for our partner groups. And this is a slide from the ministry's website. The ministry estimates that the contract costs for those collective agreements for the upcoming school year is just under seventy-four million dollars. And this is how they have allocated those funds out in the different allocations to districts. Normally, when they do these things, they put them at the basic allocation because that's where the bulk of our costs for the collective agreements have come. But you can see that they've only put about thirty-four point six percent into that per-student amount. And they've shifted some of those funds to special ed, which is up at the twenty-six point six percent, and Aboriginal, which is sixteen point six percent. So they've shifted contract money into some of the more specialized areas. And we'll talk a little more about that. What I did want to point out on this slide is if you look at the two bottom categories, the small community and the low enrollment, neither are available to this district. So twelve percent, or a little over twelve percent of what should be funded for collective agreements, this district is not eligible for. So this district has been underfunded. You can see a history here of kind of what they've typically done with the per-student amounts in the various categories. Speaking specifically to the eighteen nineteen year, there was a, you know, a two percent increase that was to most of our collective agreements. And it was, you could see that went up one hundred and twenty-two dollars per student in the general or in the regular allocation. This year, it's one point seven five plus ten minutes of prep time for all of our elementary classes. But they've only increased the per-student amount by forty-five dollars. And you can see the larger increases in the level one, level two, and level three, and in the Aboriginal funding amount, which is a concern because I think it portrays a wrong message to parents and to people in the community that there is a larger amount in some of these categories when it is a reshuffling of funds that the ministry, or, sorry, districts need to be able to pay for their collective agreements. This district has historically always spent more on special ed than what we've been allocated. I think it was fourteen million dollars in our amended budget. But Aboriginal is a targeted fund. So they've moved money now that is into a targeted space that has to be spent on Aboriginal dollars. So that's money that we would need for our collective agreements that we can't necessarily spend on a collective agreements. We would have to spend on Aboriginal funds. So we have a couple of issues. I've broken down the increase on the enrollment and the ministry grant into what is enrollment-driven and what is rate change-driven. So you can see at the bottom there, based on enrollment, we're up just over two million dollars in funding. And based on the rate change, we're just under two point six million dollars. We estimate that we need at least two point seven eight million dollars just to cover off our collective agreements. That number is probably conservative because there's TTOC costs and EOC costs that are a little harder to quantify when you're doing the budget that would be in addition to that, that we would need those funds for. So we're short, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in funding compared to what our contracts state, mainly because of that change in how they have split up the per-student amounts. In addition, our Aboriginal is up four hundred thousand dollars, which is funds, other than the contract amount in there, which probably would only be sixty or seventy thousand dollars that the district has had to find in other places to offset those contract costs. So we're, as a district, we're looking at about six hundred thousand dollars that this would have impacted the district in having to fund funds elsewhere for the collective agreement. On the tuition side, as we've increased the fee that we charge from thirteen five to fourteen five, so that's a nine hundred ninety thousand dollar increase in our funds. The next line is every year we have cancellations and fees that we are able to collect from students that pass a certain deadline and aren't eligible for a full refund. So that's the hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And our summer school students is up fifty-seven for ISP. Other revenue, a smaller amount, we, our ICBC rebates continue to decline. As everyone's rates go up, so do our rebates go down, it seems. So that's an interesting, non-linear related action. Salary recovery has gone down. That's for things that we get for workers' comp and secondments and those things that are funds that are reimbursed from other people, from staff. On the expense side, we have two hundred and eleven, seven hundred seventy-four, two hundred nineteen thousand, a million, sorry, dollars. You can see that our increase is six point six million dollars. And I'll go through all of these in detail so that you can explain where we're seeing some of these changes. For that, I wanted to show what our spending. For that, I wanted to show, uh, what, uh, our spending looks like compared to the, uh, provincial average. So ours is on the left. Uh, it's not exactly an apples-to-apples because ours is the budget for next year, and the one, uh, for the provincial one is the, the amended because that's the last, uh, reference set that we have at a provincial level. So you can see, we are about two percent higher on instruction, uh, than what the province, uh, average is, and we're down on the operations and maintenance and, uh, the transportation and housing, so, and fairly aligned with others in district and min. Teachers, uh, so these are, uh, the, the items that have changed, uh, for the teachers, uh, for, from the amended to, uh, the preliminary budget for next year. First is the, uh, increase in, uh, the contract costs, uh, which is under one point six million dollars, plus the additional ten minutes of prep time for two hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, you have to add in there the impact of demographic changes. That's, uh, going through the increments. That's, uh, the fact that we've seen a bit of a trend change over the last, uh, year where we've hired, uh, more, uh, senior, uh, teachers, and they're coming in at higher levels of the, the band than what we've historically seen. So as we have retirements, they're coming in at higher rates than we've seen. We have the full impact of some of the late starts. We have a contingency for four divisions, uh, built into our budget, uh, at the elementary, uh, level. Um, we've increased four divisions, uh, allocated up to our schools. Uh, one thing that we have done this year that we haven't historically done is we've, um, budgeted now in the preliminary budget, an estimate that throughout the year, we would have at least four teacher vacancies, uh, throughout the system, which we see through, uh, average teacher cost favorabilities and all that, which we've had historically, uh, taking in more at the amended budget. Uh, but with a tighter budget, we've taken some of that buffer in, in our preliminary buffer, uh, preliminary budget, sorry. Uh, we've, uh, reduced, uh, some, uh, teaching for the equestrian program as we're looking at, uh, how that, uh, program can function differently, and there's meetings, uh, upcoming on that. Uh, so there's a potential for some of those costs to come back depending on, uh, how that program is structured going forward. Uh, we had a secondment that has ended up at the board office, and there were vacancies and positions that weren't filled in learning support last year, uh, for three hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. We've added about ten, uh, FTE and resource teachers out to schools. We've added an international coordinator. Uh, that was offset by an administrator that had left, and you'll see that on the administration side. Our, um, maternity costs have continued to increase. We've added some to the budget there, and then just some miscellaneous essential adjustments and some other adjustments to get to the total. The principals and vice principals, uh, we've, uh, built in a wage increase, uh, for, uh, that, uh, group. The next is, uh, the district VP for Children and Care. Uh, that position wasn't, uh, full for the full year, so we've, uh, budgeted for that, uh, to be filled for the complete, uh, upcoming fiscal year. We've added, uh, District Principal for Instructional Services, which is a new, uh, position for the district. Added back, uh, a VP, uh, for Human Resources. We previously had a, um, District Principal of Human Resources that was paid out of the overhead for the Classroom, uh, Enhancement Fund, uh, but with our TTOC costs increasing, there wasn't room for that in there, in that fund anymore, so we had to absorb that into our operating, uh, budget. I previously had mentioned that the, the, uh, District Principal, uh, being removed, uh, and, uh, last year, we added, and, uh, well, we didn't add, we brought in a new District Principal for ELL, and we had an overlapping period between, uh, that position and the outgoing position, as well as, uh, how that was funded, uh, with a split between some of the French immersion funds and, uh, the operating funds. With opening the school, we have to add some administration costs, uh, at, uh, the new middle school, so that's the increase, uh, compared to what the, it was in the amended budget. We'd put in, uh, two positions, uh, at the, for a part of the year in our amended, so that's the remainder of that, uh, for the full year. And we had, uh, used restricted surpluses to do some, uh, admin support in our amended budget, uh, which is, has been reduced. Uh, there's still a restricted surplus of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for that, which we will look at how we will use that for the amended budget. Educational assistance, uh, we have a contingency of a hundred forty-five thousand dollars, wage inju- wage increases of two hundred ninety-six thousand. Uh, with the new, uh, middle school, we've, uh, added library tech hours at that school and a, and a few other places. Uh, increase in an ISP assistance at schools, uh, it's two positions, seventy-four thousand. Added two Aboriginal support workers, and we have, uh, two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars in additional SEAs that have gone to schools, and we've removed the term positions that we always have, uh, in the amended of two hundred eleven thousand dollars. And we've been able to add a district support team, uh, so this is, uh, one SEA, one youth care worker, and, uh, we have been able to find, uh, reallocated an existing teacher, so it'll be a team of three that, uh, the district has been putting together to be able to go out and support schools. The sports staff side, uh, we've, uh, redone some of our routes, so there's slight adjustment to that of twenty-two thousand. We had a lot of vacancies in our maintenance, uh, area, uh, last year, uh, so we're planning for those to, uh, all be filled for this year, uh, or hoping that they'll be all filled for this year. Uh, we, with the opening of the new school, um, that we've added custodial, uh, to Peter Ueckert Middle Secondary, and some of that also is a little bit offset to the, the high school needing a few more. The new, uh, clerical for the, the new addition of the school at Peter Ueckert, and the, we added an IT position that was, uh, not reflective of full years. That's the remainder for the full year impact, and the wage increases of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Other professionals, uh, a lot of these are positions that were, uh, only in for part of the year last year. Uh, we were a missionary IT director for part of the year, so, uh, and our, we added assistant purchasing manager and an HR manager during the year, so this is the full year impact for those positions. We have a new business analyst position that we're looking to add, uh, to the district to be able to, uh, streamline a lot of our processes and help us, uh, with, uh, implementing of, a bunch of our projects. Uh, the trustee pay increases that, uh, weren't in the amended budget and, uh, wage increases of a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Substitution costs, uh, it's one that's always a little, uh, confusing. It always shows as a large drop from the amended budget, so it's down six hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the difference mainly being that we, uh, don't, we budget full-time salaries in the other categories, but when we do the amended budget, when we, and we shift the movie, uh, from the salary lines into the casual lines. So if you compare it to preliminary last year, it's right in line and only up fourteen thousand, uh, compared to what we had in preliminary eighteen nineteen. On the benefit side, um, the previously mentioned employer healthcare tax, uh, the increased cost that we have for this year is another million dollars. We had a eight hundred thousand dollars already in our budget last year, so the cost that we have is one point eight million dollars, uh, compared to funding of one point six five million dollars. So we're short, uh, a little bit in the funding from the ministry on that, which, uh, is in line with what I've heard from, uh, other districts. They're most have seen in the eighty-five to eighty-eight percent of what they expect to be, uh, the cost is what they've received in funding. The extra four months of the teacher pension savings, that's six hundred thousand. The, uh, increases in, uh, costs from the collective agreements is three hundred sixty-two thousand. Uh, the benefits for the ten resource teachers we added, uh, we've, uh, pulled out the seven hundred thousand dollar premium saving from last year, and are estimating six hundred and eighteen thousand dollar savings this year, so almost a wash, but in and out. The wind-up of the old Langley, uh, pension plan was a one-time cost that we had in the amended budget of three hundred fifteen thousand, and then we've put in some, uh, funds for, uh, the excluded admin benefit increases, as well as the additional benefit costs for the custodians and the maintenance, uh, positions that were not there, as well as the contingencies that we have for SEAs and the divisions. On the supply side, um, the utilities are, are up. Unfortunately, with opening a new building that is our second largest in the district, that comes with a cost, uh, for, uh, the utilities. Uh, also, uh, when you open up a facility, it takes, uh, about a year to balance the systems and to optimize the usage, uh, of those things. Uh, right now, uh, facilities is, uh, estimating that is thirty to forty percent for that year. We do have a, a system that we will be implementing with, uh, like, uh, Stuart Olson, that they will be monitoring that, so we're hoping that that is, uh, a high number, and we'll be able to, uh, manage that lower. Our NGN costs, uh, are lower this year. That's the network, uh, the bandwidth, uh, pipe from the ministry that we pay to the ministry that provides all our internet services to all our facilities. Uh, we've added a hundred thirty thousand dollars in, uh, various supply budgets in, um, the maintenance area. Uh, there's a number in here that you'll see that are being reduced at schools. Schools are allowed to carry over, uh, surpluses from the previous years to be spent in the amended budget, so they go into a lot of these categories, so you'll see the, uh, school requests are down. That's one that they usually get bumps back up every time when we, uh, give them back their surpluses from the previous year. Uh, the IT lease, uh, is going to increase by eighty-nine thousand dollars. The board is going through a, uh, policy review with a consultant, uh, that we started this last weekend. Uh, the cost for that is fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we've removed some ERP, uh, upgrades and reviews that have been done in our systems. Uh, the ISP, uh, commissions are higher this year. The numbers are in line, uh, but we've had a large number of people, uh, graduate this year. Uh, so to hit the nine ninety, we actually have to bring in, uh, more students, uh, which comes with a higher commission level. We had, uh, action plans for learning grants that were a restricted amount, uh, and we still have a hundred fifty thousand in the restricted surplus that, that we will probably be using in the amended budget, but that was the amount that we pulled out for that. Uh, you can see, once again, uh, computers, furnitures, equipment budgets in schools. That's the money that they, once again, were able to carry forward and, uh, has been removed, and same with the reduction in supplies in schools. Just another way of looking at the budget, uh, you can see that the bulk of the six point six million dollar increase, uh, has gone in, four point nine of it has gone into instruction, uh, and you can see the corresponding other areas, but the bulk of our increases, uh, has gone into the classroom. Special purpose funds, uh, these are ones that, uh, are defined by the ministry as us having an obligation to do a certain, uh, task with these things, which would have to be repaid if not done. Uh, so, uh, this is the change in revenues for them. You can see that we're, uh, down four point four million dollars. The bulk of that is in the Classroom Enhancement Fund, and I'll speak to that specifically. It's just how they've, uh, funded some of that. The other funds that are down, like the Learning Improvement Fund, uh, the, are, is, uh, carry-forward amounts, and then there's the, uh, there was a question asked earlier about some of the special education funds. Uh, that's, uh, we used the end of that grant, uh, last year, uh, and so there's no more funds in that, uh, fund. Community link is declined, uh, because that's, was the carry-forward for the previous year, so the funding amount has, has not changed. You can see the expenses, uh, going down as well. Um, w- once again, these are all related to the carry-forwards or the, uh, funding of the CEF, which is the next slide. What the ministry has done is, uh, for preliminary budgets, they have given us ninety percent of our FTE funding, which is the teacher's line that you can see up at the top. They have given us the same overhead as the, uh, previous year, and remedy, uh, they, um, haven't given us anything. They didn't give us anything last year either at this point in time. Uh, they determined that once, uh, it's after September thirtieth, uh, because districts have up until then to provide best efforts, uh, and then the remedies are, are calculated from that. You'll see two amounts on that. Uh, the one, the first one, the one just under two million, the one point nine-nine million dollars is the, uh, amount that we are projecting, uh, for this year's remedies. And the one point one million is actually remedies from the previous school year that weren't paid out. And the ministry actually had taken those funds back until we came to an agreement with, uh, our local LTA, uh, and then they have since replenished those funds, and we have now passed those funds on to the LTA. Uh, so you can see the difference in our CEF, uh, dollars, uh, compared to what was in our amended budget. Schedule four is our capital. Wanted to go through, uh, the, specifically the ones that are capital items that are funded out of our operating budget. Uh, we had set aside from our, uh, restricted surpluses half a million dollars to do, uh, updates at DW Poppy, some, uh, re, uh, configuration of the board office. Uh, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for, uh, portable, uh, moves and, uh, equipment for some of those, uh, portables. In the amended budget, we'd set aside a hundred thousand dollars to start some of the work on Peter Ueckert, uh, Middle School with more tech becoming later. And we had forty-six thousand dollars in a bus communication system, um, upgrade. You can see that we've increased our computer hardware, a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, so we're trying to invest more into our, uh, hardware side as a district, uh, so for servers, uh, and some of the back infrastructure that, uh, is needed. We have a new Director of IT who's starting to build a, a longer-term plan for that and, uh, giving the district more visibility on that, and we'll be bringing more to the trustees on that. Uh, the vehicles, we've maintained, uh, that amount. Uh, we are hoping to be able to add to that amount in the amended budget, uh, with our Director of Facilities to get to a ten-year replacement plan or two hundred thousand kilometers. We need roughly five or six hundred thousand dollars worth of vehicles over the next five, uh, five years per year. So that's somewhere where we're going to have to keep an eye on, uh, to get our fleet back into, uh, a replenished state that we can maintain. When we approve the amended budget, um, this is what our, um, accumulated surpluses, uh, looked like. Uh, assuming that we had finished the year in our, the three point two million dollar deficit, we would have, at the end of this fiscal year, thirteen million dollars in surplus, ten point five of that being, uh, restricted amounts, uh, by the district for targeted funds. The first being, uh, the, uh, internally restricted by the board. That is the one that was recommended to us during the days of deficits. The districts have a, uh, one and a half to two and a half percent, uh, surplus to contingency to be able to deal with, uh, unforeseen issues. That is controlled by board motion, uh, the, or board by, uh, policy, pardon me, uh, which outlines the things that it can be used for, and that when it is used, needs to be replenished over the subsequent two budgeting cycles. We've set some money aside, uh, one point one, one, five, uh, million dollars for infrastructure replacements. That's, that was a higher number. That's where the DW Poppy had come from. Uh, we also have half a million dollars for portables. We have one point six million dollars, uh, set aside for, uh, the capacity issues that we have at LSS. That was right-sized, but, uh, was not right-sized after the restored language, where we have eleven portables, uh, showing up there this summer. As mentioned, uh, we still have a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in, in min and development, which we'll look at for the amended budget. Uh, we would have four hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, the technology plan. We spent four hundred fifty thousand last year. It was nine hundred thousand. And District Initiative of Sports Schools, which was the action grants for this year, uh, so we have a hundred fifty thousand that we can do something similar. And then we have the three point one million dollars, which are the school bank accounts. Uh, we have to record those as part of the district, uh, report in, but, uh, that is not funds that, uh, the, the district spends. Those are the ones that are in individual banks' accounts for schools, for things that they've collected for, uh, field trips and trips and, and those kind of things. That leaves us two point five million dollars in our unrestricted surplus. To balance our proposed nineteen-twenty, uh, amended budget, we propose that we would take from that two point five million dollars, uh, one point seven million dollars, and to use the other four hundred fifty thousand dollars of our technology plan, uh, to balance our deficit right now of the two point one eight million dollars. Uh, if that were to happen, uh, this is what our, uh, accumulated surplus would look like, uh, at the end of, uh, June next year. You can see that we are now only at ten million dollars in, uh, restricted surpluses, and only seven hundred eighty thousand dollars left in unrestricted. So that is what we would have to be able to balance, uh, the twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, so at the rate we're going, if we kept the structure that we have of the two point two million dollars, we would not have the surplus balance left to be able to balance that budget. So this is a plan that the district has had. We've been trying to draw those down, uh, systematically and slowly then get back to a, uh, year-by-year balanced budget, and then have just the restricted amounts that would be one-time items. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I do see, um, the Vice Chair Coburn has a question, and, uh, we also have Trustee Todd and Trustee Ross and Trustee Ward. So we will start with, uh, Mr. Cob. So we will start with Vice Chair Coburn.
So way back in the report, you stated that the ministry has claimed that they've increased funding to Aboriginal education, correct?
Didn't claim they've increased it. They have increased the per student rates.
Right.
Which gives the public the impression that there is additional funds to the system, which there is not. It is a reallocation of the contract obligations that the district has.
Okay, so they've added no more money to the quantum in order for us to execute this much overdue support.
The only amount that they've added is that 74 million for the contract obligations, which they've allocated, that I had shown in that slide.
Okay.
So no new money on top of that now.
Okay. And so are you able to tell me what this district will have to do in order to meet this directive by the ministry?
That funding and partly opening of the schools is why we have a larger deficit than this district was planning at this point. We do have the surpluses to manage it, and we can phase it over time. I'm not sure what districts do that don't have accumulated surplus.
Okay, so then for districts that don't have an accumulated surplus and for one day when we don't, are you able to tell me then how this is good for children and families?
No, I'm not.
Thank you.
All right, so our next speaker is Trustee Todd.
Thank you, Secretary Treasurer. As always, very detailed and great budgetary update. I did have some things I'd like to highlight and talk about. The district support team. Maybe you can explain the, the idea behind this. And I think I know what it's all about, but it looks like you're adding at least three people to a team that's dealing. Is this to deal with schools that are in crisis or in a difficult situation?
If I could turn that over to Assistant Superintendent Gill, he'd probably be able to answer that, and then I can.
Certainly, the district support team, the three staff members that are included will work with the learning support team just in general. What the thought is, is that there was some thought around schools that may be in crisis or need additional support, but we're actually going to use a team as more of a proactive approach. Come along schools where there's a, there's a need for additional staff or additional support. We may have new resource teachers, maybe have new SEAs in place, a new youth care worker. That team can come alongside, support, train, stay in the school until they supported the students in need and provided the resources necessary for the school to function in a, in a, in a positive way.
Just a follow-up from Trustee Todd.
Yeah, just to follow up, and this might sound like a strange question, but I did have a question around our ISP program. Have we ever had students that paid in cash and then requested a refund very, in a short order or anything like that? Because apparently today there are some concerns around students higher institutes. I'm just curious if there's, there's, there's been concern or have we been alerted to that?
No concern that we're aware.
Thank you. So we now have Trustee Ross.
Thank you. Appreciate the work and Mr. Shin as well and his team. I'm sure there's a lot of people behind the scenes on these numbers. What I wanted to ask you about tonight was, we've talked about support for students, but it's evident we're going to need support for Secretary Treasurer when he has to deal with the stressors of what's coming down the pipe. So what are the stressors that keep you awake at night, sir?
Wow, you've changed the format of that question. I like it. For me, it's the uncertainty of the funding, the funding model that's coming in at some point. Really, there is not a lot of information on what that looks like. It does cause me concern when I see a funding formula report that makes all kinds of recommendations that they're not going to be implemented. And then they go and change our per student amounts almost in line perfectly with those recommendations and say that they haven't changed the funding formula. That causes me great concern. So I would have to say uncertainty as to what our funding is going to look like in two, three years from now.
Okay, thank you. And the last speaker I have on the list is Trustee Ward. If there's anybody else that would like to speak, please let me know.
Okay, I don't know if I can speak to a couple of things, but one, one comment that I have just in, in an effort to show transparency to our thousands of online viewers and our constituents. We use a lot of abbreviations, FTE, ISP, HR, EHB, ATC, IT, so on, PEMS, FSA. Could we, in a, in a follow-up report, just even in small, just for others? Like, most of us know what these, these are, but for, like I said, for the thousands of viewers, they may not. So something to consider just when these acronyms come, or these abbreviations come up, just to have them there. Something to consider. But I will follow up with a, with a question of, I'm looking on, and it wasn't covered in particular here, I don't know, but with respect to the financial plan draft for 2020. But I just was reading through it, and it talks about Ministry of Education grants, equity. Like, there's a number of them, but on page six, equity, transportation supplement, economic stability dividend. Can you explain some of those, what those grant, how those grants, how they work, kind of?
The economic stability dividend is part of the collective agreements. So there was a, an elastical collective agreement. There was an agreement that there was, if the province did better than their targets, that it would be shared in a collective agreement settlements. Those kick in in May, May 1st of every year until, I think this, this year was the last year. So when we do our amended budget, we put in our estimate for that grant and the associated costs that go with that increase. And then they roll that in, in the funding that they give us in the 74 million dollars in the contracts funding that they provide to districts. So that was that one. I missed the other one that you asked, sorry. Oh, transportation. That was one that was provided a couple of years ago that, to districts, that you could get a grant for transportation. The prerequisite for that was that you didn't charge for any transportation for those that were required to be transported. And that only is for those that are outside of the walking distances. Our grant happened to be the same amount that we used to collect in revenue. So we, that our grant offset that. But since it became free, our costs went up, so.
All right, thank you very much. So I don't have any other speakers on the list. So tonight, we're going to be giving the motion for the annual budget bylaw for 2019 and 2020, both first and second reading. So the recommendation is that the school district number 35 Langley, 2019, 2020, annual budget bylaw in the amount of $251,934,582 be given first reading. Could I please get a mover? Moved by Trustee Ross, seconded by Trustee Todd. Any comments, questions on giving the bylaw first reading? Trustee Ross?
It's just fun, it's just fun to note that it is a quarter of a billion dollars. So we've got over the line, so I just want to recognize that. Who would have thought? Thank you.
A lot of money, absolutely. Any other comments on that? Saying none, all those in favor of giving the bylaw first reading? Motion is carried. And then second recommendation is that school district number 35 Langley, 2019, 2020, annual budget bylaw in the amount of $251,934,582 be given second reading. Could I please get a mover? Moved by Trustee Ward, seconded by Trustee Ross. Any comments on that? Questions saying none? All those in favor of giving the bylaw second reading? So at this point next week, we're hoping for a large turnout, like in the past for our budget open house. We have had people who were lost before attend. It was, we're hoping to get some more friends and family to attend this time. And I do see our former chair in the back. Hello, trustee, former trustee and Chair McFarland. We hope to see your budget open house also. And then from there, this will come back to the June meeting for third and final reading. Well, thank you. And that concludes your items, Secretary Treasurer, correct? All right, so that means it's over to you, Superintendent. And we are on to our items, 8.1.1 Summer Session, correct?
Thank you, Chair Megan Dyckman. And at this point, I'm going to call forth to Kathy Gracie and Ron Stare. And great pleasure of working with Ron a number of years ago. And he said, you know what, Gord, I think this Summer Session program has a lot more potential to it than just looking at something remedial at the secondary level. And from that vision, we have a program today that has well over 4,000 students that are involved. And I'm really pleased tonight to have both of them, both Kathy and Ron, that, you know, take part in quite an organizational effort to put this together, share with you what you can look forward to this summer and to be able to take your questions. So thanks to both of you for coming on tonight to share this.
It's a pleasure to come and share with trustees and give updates such a program as this. So I think, as Gord mentioned, I think this is year nine for me going into Summer Session. Kathy, you're five. Yeah, so we, we're both pretty passionate about this, but we're just one of a big team, which we'll touch on during our presentation. And the, my title is actually District Principal of Continuing Education. And basically, every school that I'm responding, responsible for, including Summer Session, is a way to continue the education of the students in Langley. And Summer Session is no exception. And part of that is also making sure that we're in alignment with the district's mission, vision, and values. And so the innovative, inspiring, and unified learning community, we really do try and carry that forward into Summer Session. I think when, every year when we report back on the experiences that students have, we can legitimately say that we were able to do that. So that's just a real treat that we're able to be part of that. So we're going to tag team it a little bit here. I'll let Kathy take over here.
This one?
Yeah.
So last year, for Summer Session, we operated out of 13 different locations, opening, operating a wide diversity, offering very diverse programming and lots of opportunities for learning for students. Some of those programs were called skill builder programs, where there'd be more remedial, and others are more based on explorations for different program, or lots of different interests that they may have, ranging from kindergarten all the way up to secondary school. So we have many different locations. Right, well, we have nine elementary schools, several high schools. And then we also have an outdoor ecological program that is outdoor and is provided in some of our local parks around Langley. So very exciting. Over 3,000, 3,700 students, 205 teachers, 77 SEAs, a youth care worker and an Aboriginal support worker, and 15 admin and seven plus clerical. So it's a very big working machine, but it takes a lot of us working together to have it all come together.
And just touching on the, the amount of people it takes, I mean, Kathy and I are here representing really that whole team. And we have a sort of a short time period to get it up and running and a short time period to close her down. And I just wanted to touch on briefly, just a shout out to my staff because, because they're attached to me. The seven plus clerical at my school, plus also the people up here at the board office, really are heavily involved in the front loading of making sure all of those students and all those support staff and teachers are actually part of the program. So without them, really, this program doesn't happen. So looking ahead to this year, our registration opened on April the 8th and open online as usual and also in person at the board office. And for the first time this year, we're giving priority to registration for in-district students. Part of that is because of the huge popularity of the program in Langley. Neighboring, actually, districts actually don't open up their program to other, to other people, other students just because it's, it's a big task. Some only open it up to their own students, or they only open it up by referral. And some don't even offer Summer Session. So as Gord touched on it, we really feel like in Langley, we are trying to extend the opportunities for students and give them an opportunity in summer to explore their interests or to improve their skills in certain areas. But because of that growth, we've had to try and manage it a bit this year. So we are still open to out-of-district students, but we, we've had to delay their, their registration a little bit. And so far, it seems to be working. So far this year, our registrations are up about 12% from the same time last year. And if you look at the previous year overall, we're about 21% higher compared to two years ago. I'm not sure how much more we can grow, but right now, we still seem to be getting a lot of interest every summer from parents and guardians and students in the community who really want to have an opportunity for, at the elementary middle. And also, it's just, it's a lot of fun. I mean that literally because the opportunity is not just to do the enrichment, but also for students to go deeper in areas that they're passionate about, that they maybe don't have a chance to focus on as heavily during the school year. At the secondary, and partly the interest, but also the additional location, which Kathy will touch on in just a second with the location. At the secondary level, we're up about 6% compared to last year and the year before. And an interesting split sort of happening a little bit, as we've touched on before at past presentations. We operate out of Walnut Grove as one of our sites, and we've operated at Brookswood the last number of years. And the Brookswood location is a bit more geographically south than we'd like. We prefer to have the LSS location because it's on a major bus route. But as you know, with the construction happening there, we aren't, haven't been able to have it there. So we are looking forward to hopefully having Summer Session back at LSS next year just because of its geographic proximity and also the proximity and bus routes for students coming from various locations. But even this year, it split a little bit. So we're about 2/3 of Walnut Grove and 1/3 at Brookswood this year, which is up higher for Brookswood and a little bit down for Walnut Grove. So it seems to be sort of balancing out a little bit already. So I'll let Kathy talk about some changes for this year.
So we have added Douglas Park Elementary as a new site. That came about from a request, actually, from the admin at that site. And through conversations of, we, we always have had it at Blacklock, which is an excellent site, which we will continue to use. But the thought was, it was very difficult for some of the families at Douglas Park to make the trek to Blacklock. And we wanted to provide extra additional opportunities. So the Douglas Park site will be primarily for ELL students and for math and literacy skill building classes. The enrollment was a bit slow to take off, but we're really seeing it coming alongside now. So we're, we're excited about that. So there's Douglas Park mentioned there. We have people that get very interested in different things, and they often will even recommend, you know, have you thought about doing a course in this? And you have thought about doing, and Ron's excellent about really taking those suggestions into consideration. Did you want to talk about the summer?
Yes, just in the secondary continued interest because our, we haven't seen a huge increase in the growth in the secondary, but the program was already quite large anyways. But what we are seeing is that growth has continued. And I just wanted to touch on with the change over to the BC curriculum this year. As of June 30th, obviously, any of the old curriculum changes at the grade 11 and 12 level. And then we have to be in compliance with the new curriculum as of the start of Summer Session. So we will see some new courses being offered for the first time in the academic areas in particular for Summer Session, at Summer Session this year.
So one of the programs that we added last year is computational thinking and coding for grades six, seven, and eight. We're up to three cohorts of that. And it, it's, it's been caught on like wildfire. The students really are engaged. And we have quite a few teachers that are very excited to actually help develop and, and do the programming for that as well. We have some math challenge courses. We have an abundance of fine arts and ELL courses. We've brought on some sports and fitness exploration and just an abundance of variety of, of programs. We also, another very popular one is the maker space explorations or slash, we can also call it junior trades, which is, is very exciting. Last year, they were, they went into the wood shop. They planned their own vehicles, their own little cars, and then they powered them with little, I don't even know what they powered them with, with the.
Carbon dax.
The, the little cartridges, and then they had races down the hallway. So, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity to have fun and be engaged and have great learning opportunities in the summer, both for the staff and for the kids. Because we really do encourage the teachers to take risks and, you know, really dive in and have fun with the kids as it is, you know, summer learning especially.
Just briefly, because Kathy doesn't look after the. Just briefly, because Kathy doesn't look after the registration part, but I do. The computational thinking and coding within the first week of registration, we're already up to two full classes. The Maker Explorations at Walnut Grove within a week, both those classes were full. And by the next week, the one at Brookswood was also full. So some of them, we actually don't have the physical space to offer more. And so parents, sort of the word is out for some of these classes, like make sure you get in right away. So there's a really high demand at the start of registration for some of the classes that students are really keen to get into. One other thing we'll just highlight is, we have some site specific summer programs that are specifically operating out of particular secondary schools and also our middle schools. And the idea behind these ones is we want to increase engagement opportunities in the summer to build the relationships and those connections with the students for the school year ahead. And because of the letter of understanding we also have with the LTA, we're able to actually hire teachers who either are currently working with those students or who will be working with those students. So it's actually not just any teacher, it's actually a teacher that's going to make those connections with the students. And for certain students in particular, that engaged learner is really critical. And they have a hard, some students have a harder time engaging than others. So this is an opportunity for them in the summertime to either stay engaged at some sites or to actually just sort of start to build those network of connections so that when they show up in September, they're not starting from scratch because a lot of those students really struggle with those connections. So we have one at Betty Gilbert operating again this year. And they're looking at, with their existing students, trying to maintain connections that they've worked on really hard throughout the year and not starting from scratch again in September. At DW Poppy, they have incoming students. And this, this particular one has really grown over the last number of years. They have a lot of the feeder schools referring their students to come there that are coming to Poppy for the first time. WGSS, the same thing, they call it Gator Shades from their feeder schools. And also at Stafford, and they have an interesting model where they actually have their students come back in August before school starts as a way to engage the students rather than at the beginning of summer, they actually work towards more towards the end of the summer as a way to connect. And again, it's site specific and that's what works for their program.
We are very fortunate to have partnership, to have partnerships with the township of Langley and with the Langley Township. And so summer session runs from nine till noon. And then the Langley Township and the city of Langley have recreation programs at most of our sites. I can see they're listed there from noon until four. And it's priced very reasonably so parents can sign up their children and know that they are looked after from nine until four. So it's an excellent service for the families, which really do, really helps to complement our summer learning program as well. So I think that's it.
Great, and we're almost done here. So just wrapping up and just reviewing a couple of things. So our elementary, middle years programs run July eighth to twenty-sixth. So they're three week programs from nine in the morning till twelve noon. One thing we didn't touch on is we are offering our middle years programs in the Willoughby Slope area this year at Alex Hope, not at Yorcson Creek. And it's simply because of the transitions happening between Yorcson Creek and Peter York this year. There's no way we could run a program out of there and let them get their whole school, some of their school moved and all these things that were happening there. So that's why if you happen to wonder, why is it at Alex Hope? That's not a middle school. We tried to find the closest school we could that would fit their needs. And also Alex Hope used to be a K to seven school, obviously, so the building itself can facilitate it. It's not just their current model. And with the new site at Douglas Park that Kathy touched on, secondary, Brookswood and Walnut Grove from July second to August second, so a five week program. And startup is in just over a month. And as always, we would invite you as trustees to come out to our programs, maybe give us the first day or two to get our feet under us, to get everything sorted out. But it is a different dynamic and it's a fun dynamic in summer. I can honestly tell you that students when they come to summer are there because they want to be. There's very few students that are, it's not the old summer school model that I've got to go to summer school. People are clamoring to sign up because they're finding it's meeting their needs and they enjoy their time there. And I mean that sincerely. So come and find out for yourself if you don't believe me and come and see what it's really like. So thanks, and we're glad to stick around and answer any questions we can.
Thank you, that's wonderful. I do have a speakers list, which is lots of interests. So our first person on the speakers list is Trustee Pro. Then we go to Trustee Todd, Trustee Ross, Trustee Wilson, and Vice Chair Coburn.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, I would have to say so much. Always loves summer session. It has such a tremendous impact on our district and our students, especially our students with different types of learner differentiations, right? That continuity is so incredible. And the fact that you have that, that the summer programs with teachers working with students in those programs to connect with them and line them in the September session is absolutely brilliant. And that's such a great thought process that we need to always be working towards when we're doing transition meetings and stuff like that to support our kids. Our trade, junior trades, I want you to know, my own child who did junior trades two years in a row, who really struggled academically, he's, he's moving towards red seal. And that was a direct impact of working in the junior trades. I put him into summers in a row. He caught on fire about trades and away he went. And so I, thank you for igniting that. My question is regarding, and I'm going to assume the answer is yes, but regarding this important program we're starting up at Douglas Park and working with our youth at risk, are we ensuring we're having enough support staff and their educational assistance to support our students? Because our kids who are coming in are going to be high anxiety. They're increased because there's transition occurring. And so of course, those are the things I'm always thinking about, where our supports are coming in for kiddos. And are we ready for them throughout summer session as a whole, but especially in those pocket areas that have high points of impact?
We've, we try to go through great lengths because we want all students to be successful at summer session. And we know that there's a number of our students that are going to need support. So Ron and I have, we've come in to the resource department meetings and we've presented to all of the district's resource teachers and asked them specifically to touch base with all the students on their caseload so that, and talk to their parents to make sure that what they're signing up for is a good fit for those students. We also have access, because through my ed, we have access to all the students' IEPs. So we can make sure that those are run off ahead of time and that the teachers getting these students will have a heads up of what's, what's coming or who is coming, sorry, of what challenges or who is coming into their class. And we have another partner in crime, Kim Anderson, that she does all the hiring and placing of the SEAs. And she goes to extraordinary lengths. As even with students that are not in our district, she makes contact with the parents and make sure that all of their paperwork and the things are in place. And she works very hard. Oftentimes, we'll have the resource teachers recommend an SEA who wants to work summer session, who already knows the child. And we try and match them up as well, just to try and make that transition as smooth as possible.
Thank you, Trustee Pro. Uh, Trustee Todd?
Well, first off.
Thank you. I just love it. My own daughter benefited. And I really am inspired by your kind of, your growth mindset when it comes to summer school. And it seems that summer school has morphed or changed and transformed into following your passions a little bit. It's okay in the summer to have fun, to maybe recharge. And I hopefully, it's not just recharging for the students. Hopefully, it's recharging for the staff as well. Because you guys have already, you know, you put down your tools for ten months and now you're picking them up for another month, month and a half. So I really like the engagement of learners that occurs during summer school. I just had maybe two questions. Have you done any kind of exit surveys of, of summer school? Just to kind of give you, well, heads up where we might want to go. And another thing is, if you, and this sounds with apologies, trust me, in five years, where might you see our summer school? Like, what would be the sweet spot if you were visioning down the road?
Sure, so a couple of things. You talked about staff being engaged and Kathy can speak to this too. Because we have a chance to go out and visit all the staffs, whether it's secondary, elementary, or the youth at risk. I'm getting teachers who are interested and interested. If anything, we actually don't probably have enough because we just don't have enough physically in the district who are available. But summer session isn't just about, oh, I can earn a little bit of extra money. I can tell you pretty much en masse that people come back year after year because they find it is actually a way to, it's a pro D of actually connecting with other people. You actually have the opportunity to focus on one particular subject area. And you're actually connecting with people you don't normally connect with in a year. So they always sort of come, well, that was cool, this idea. So that part is never really an issue. So people do find it empowering, so that's, that's the one thing. The second question you'd asked, sorry, was?
In five years.
In five years, yeah. You know, it's interesting because we do have a growth mindset where it's always, we want to be student centered. So our growth really isn't so much about numbers. I mean, we reflected back that we're up, you know, ten or twenty percent over a few years ago. But I don't think that's because we're going after the numbers. We're actually going after what's meeting the needs of the students. So if anything, I would hope our mindset five years from now isn't about whether we have more numbers, but the students that we do have, are we continuing to meet their needs? And I don't think it's a pipe dream to say that the summer session really should be helping our district graduation rates. Because if we are actually helping students stay engaged, if we're meeting the needs of the students who are struggling in certain areas and we're helping students feel empowered in the areas that they're passionate about, that really should carry forward into their schooling. And in the long term, the long game is, we think that summer session is actually helping the district work towards their long-term graduation rates and their success with students. I mean, the other caveat is, I mean, in my role, I see the students who don't fit into those six-year rates. But I'm interested in the seven, eight, nine, ten-year graduation rates. But at the end of the day, the, the summer session really should be a way of helping those students get closer to their graduation. For example, we made a district decision, I want to say about six years ago, to offer more math credit, more math hours than we really needed to, according to the ministry. Because we recognized as a district, we got together as a, as a number of staff. And we said, if, if students don't succeed at grade eight math and grade nine math, their graduation rates plummet. So we've actually, we put more time and effort into those, those math rates because the school can look after a lot of those other things, but if their math skills are behind. And I'm hoping that that's part of what we're seeing with the increased math ability and also graduation rates long term, so.
You did ask about an exit survey as well. So once summer, summer session is over, all of the admin do come together and we do a debrief. So we look at, and, and we always have a running tally throughout the whole process as well. But we really talk about what went well and areas that we can improve for next year. So that was partly where the delayed in the registration for out of district, that's where that came from for this year, so.
Great, thank you. And now we have Trustee Ross.
Thank you. Your program. The question I have is with respect to the independent schools. Do we get any independent school kids?
Yes, for sure.
Approximately how many?
I have to look. It's open to any, any schools, or sorry, any, any state, any district. And this year is the first year we restricted the registration. Doesn't mean they won't be able to, they can't yet. But I don't have those numbers. But we get, we do get a lot of people, for example, from any of the local private independent schools, some in Surrey, because some of the ones that attend school in Surrey, they actually live in Langley, so it's closer to them. Maple Ridge, we get inquiries. So I would, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but we do definitely. The other thing too, Trustee Ross, is we actually get, since some of the senior secondary classes, we actually have some recent grads who are actually graduated but need to come back and upgrade. And also some adults who are in their, typically, it's not adults beyond sort of mid twenties, but they are also able to attend and takes, for example, some of the math upgrading, English. They need to redo for post-secondary, any of the sciences. So sometimes they'll be in the course too.
Thank you. I have Trustee Wilson and then I have Vice Chair Coburn.
Yes, just one question. Sometimes I do and sometimes other people magically do it for me, so. Thank you so much for all that you do. It's great and your presentation was great. And thank you for the invite to come out and witness summer school. I might take you up on that. Not the computing and coding, but maybe the car racing sounds fun. So I have two quick questions. The, I loved how you talked about LSS and I do feel it's really central and the buses work amazingly there and they get so many kids there. And I could see why that would be a great idea to host summer session. Is there any consideration or is this happening in any way for, like, to use the school buses and have like two or three central areas where kids could get to easily? And then just school bus them to these sites?
We've had that question in the past and we have looked into it, but it's just logistics of, of not having the typical bus schedules running during the summertime. And also the coordination of it, just because of the diversity of our district, trying to organize that is awkward at times. And so we, we've looked into it at the surface level. We never really figured a way to make it work that, so that it could work. And also the timing of everything. Because part of it is, some students take one course, so maybe they start at eight thirty, they're done at twelve thirty. So some of them are done for the day, but then some of them are also taking afternoon classes. So it's a diversity of the schedules and the geographic diversity of the students. It makes it really hard to manage that.
Second question then is, you talked about how great your staff is because of all the extra intake stuff. Do we have the, enough staffing for all of the extra work with registration and the students for summer school? And do we have enough teachers and teaching assistants and everybody lined up to accommodate our summer sessions?
Well, Kathy can speak to the, the teachers and the SEAs and I can speak to the other side, yep.
So I run the program for K to, K to eight. And so as of today, I have about a hundred and twenty teachers hired and committed and in their placement for summer session. Our registration is still open until the end of June. So I'm still waiting on a couple of classes to come up in numbers before I'll hire for those. Sorry. I need to get a drink. Go ahead.
So we have enough teachers at elementary. At the secondary level, we also have enough, Sam Maraca and Mike Pugh are the two administrators that oversee the hiring there. But the thing we always struggle with, but this isn't just us, this is in metro in general, is finding enough teachers in certain sort of high needs areas. So things like upper level science, upper level math, sometimes it's hard finding enough people who are qualified in those areas and want to teach in summer session. So it's always a bit of a struggle. Typically, we've never had to turn away registration, but at times we've had to sort of say, we can't offer more as many classes as we'd like. So that's with the teachers. As far as the SEAs, we're always able to, you ready to go with the SEAs? Go for it.
So last year, we were able to do another letter of understanding and increase the hours from three hours to four hours for SEAs specifically, which really, really helped to have more people sign up to, to work. So we've increased our numbers quite a bit. And they find it, they really, like all of our staff, they really enjoy. It's like, almost like the honeymoon time in September, right? Because everyone's getting to know each other and, and the kids are only there a short amount of time. And as Ron said, there's very few behavior issues and it's just really enjoyable. So a lot of our, both our teachers and our support staff, yeah, we're, we're done very well in numbers. This year, we had a hundred and seventy-five teachers apply. So I still have a buffer. And then even after that, I've had probably twenty teachers contact me saying, I've missed the deadline for applications, can you put me in as a late applicant? So yeah, so there's lots of people there that are wanting to work.
And as far as other support staff, really quickly, it's just, it's the clerical staff that are actually helping doing all the registration. So there's a great team up here at the board office that's involved, working on clerical support services. And they do a fantastic job of helping with the out of district and also some internationals. But also at each site, any secondary sites, the international program, the administrative assistants in those offices actually help with the registration. And then at LEC, all of my staff are pretty knowledgeable because they're answering questions about our program plus of all of summer sessions. So when I say seven plus, it really does take an army of all the registrations. And I know, I know, I didn't put it up there, but we've been really fortunate also with the support of the district leadership team to have the flexibility that Kathy touched on where we can, hey, what about this, do we give a try? Well, yeah, that sounds good. So Mel Gilz, our assistant superintendent that oversees it, previously it was Gord Stewart. And he was also assistant superintendent with that program. So I just feel like, sort of top to bottom, we've got support for the program. So I want to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you. So the last two speakers are Vice Chair Coburn and then I just have a couple of quick comments. And then after that, I'm going to ask trustees if they'd like to take a five minute recess as we go into the next part of the agenda.
So I just want to thank you for attending to our friends at Dougie Park. It's well overdue. So my question is, and I was over here with Trustee Pro trying to figure out how to use the right language and I've given up. So I'm just going to ask the question. So this nine to four all day peace of mind at a fair cost, right? Sounds awesome. And I think that this is something that every parent and caregiver deserves. So I'm wondering if we've ever said no to a family due to the needs of a child who is not identified? And if so, what can we do as a board to support you that so all kids and families are included in this opportunity? Because it is so good. Also, to speak to the bringing up of graduation rates, many of us who, many of our students who don't graduate fall into this unidentified category. So they would be for me the target, speaking of bringing up graduation rates. So I hope you can understand the question in there and speak to it.
Sure, I'll do my best. I mean, I think part of it is in summer, actually, I'm proud of the fact that as a district, years ago, we were one of the first districts in the metro region to actually apply for and receive supplemental funding for students who are identified and receive the extra funding. So the idea of hiring SEAs So the idea of hiring SEAs, I would say even five years ago, was wasn't something that happened a lot. So what we try to do, and Kathy touched on the work that Kim Anderson does, between Kim, we have administrators that run it at every site and then also at Kathy. So we we get SCA funding. But what we also try and do is have those SEAs not work just with those particular students if possible. We try and be strategic in how we do classroom placements so that those students who, as you mentioned, they refer to them as gray area or unidentified, so they don't really draw in funding. But the same as we do during the regular school year at any site, the administrators, the teachers, the SEAs, try and do the best they can to to work with the students regardless of whether they have a designation or not. And I think that's the exciting thing about summer is, and Kathy can jump in after I'm done my piece, but is the opportunity that students have. It's it's just a three weeks in the elementary middle where they, and half days, so they, it's not this really long day. Students seem to be able to flourish in those settings and also when they are, be able to focus on one particular topic, whether it's something of interest or they're trying to improve their math skills or their literacy skills. If you put that together with the teachers who are really passionate about it, the SEAs who are trying to work with them, it just seems to work. And I I do understand what you're asking about the the students who are are not receiving funding. They're not technically identified. But I would say we've had really good success based on the, just the general culture of trying to make sure that no student's left behind.
Absolutely. And follow-up, vice chair Coburn.
And that's wonderful. I'm wondering if we've ever said no to a family or had a child removed due to the ability or the inability to regulate or mental health, where the child does not have the identification and is having all sorts of behavioral problems, but they don't have that. Have we ever said no to a family?
Not, not that I can think of in the nine years that I've been here or eight years that I'm coming up on nine. And Kathy can't think of one either. I mean, we've had students, so Kathy touched on the idea that we meet with the resource teachers and also with administrators because we want the students to be placed well. A keystone habit of any program is if you place students well, you have a much higher success rate. So if we place them well, we hope that they're going to succeed. But there's also sometimes, for some students in particular, they really struggle with that transition. So that first week can be really difficult for some students. So, you know, even though we've met with the parents or we've talked to the parents, we've talked to the resource team, sometimes they come in and just something triggers them. So we have had situations where students have really struggled and we've had to either bring in another SCA or we've had to make sure that additional teacher. So, I mean, there have been times when the parent goes, you know, this just isn't working. And for the sake of their own child, they'll say, you know, I don't think this is actually benefiting my child. So after the first week, sometimes they have decided to withdraw them, but it's based on what's actually in the best interest of their student, not because we've asked them not to be there.
Thank you. So I didn't see any further speakers. The quick question I wanted to ask was, I had a couple of parents from high school that were looking through the program when it came out. And one of the questions that I've been asked a few times in the community is if there's been any thought of maybe offering shorter sections for high school students to explore some of the trades and other things that aren't offered at their school, to give them an opportunity to figure out if that would be a path they were interested in. Has that been something that has been looked at, maybe why, making a wider variety of high school electives at a summer session?
So the short answer is yes, we have looked at it and we have actually tried at times a few general, I'll call them general interest courses in the sense they're not attached to a particular academic course. We haven't, in Langley, I'm not sure why that is, but in the last few years, we've had more interest in courses that are actually for credit in the in a particular subject area. But interestingly enough, when I, when I was first involved with summer session years ago, for example, we used to have a band program. And I remember at Stafford and also, I believe, at when we were at LSS, so we actually had a summer band program. And I think part of the reason why maybe it's changed a bit is because of the the wide variety of extra opportunities in some of these areas that are available throughout the school year and not just in summer anymore. So we could, for example, do a trades explorations at secondary. We just haven't really had a lot of interest in it up to this point. So it's not, we're not open to that. And as Kathy touched on, if we had an idea and somebody wanted to to run with it, we would definitely offer it. Another example is a PE ten, eleven, twelve, which Surrey runs with great success. We offered it, it's only run once in the last four years. And for whatever reason, like I think summer PE, grade ten, eleven, twelve would be an excellent opportunity because you're actually, you don't have to worry about the weather, you're outside doing all these team sports. But we, it just hasn't really gotten any traction and I'm not sure why. So the short answer is, we typically try and run something for at least a couple of years. And then if we find that it's just not drawing a lot of traction, then we just typically move on to something else that we know will will run. So I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely. And and thank you. And thank you for the exciting update. We've watched as this program's grown and the hard work that's been put into it, the excitement and the wonderful feedback we've received. So thank you for coming back once again to share this update. It really was wonderful.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you. So trustees, we have another report. This next report will be about half an hour. And I've been watching and it seems as though maybe a five-minute recess might be something that my fellow trustees would appreciate. If so, could I please get a motion moved by trustee Ward, seconded by trustee Perot, that we take a five-minute recess and come back in the next five minutes? All those in favor? It's Carrie. We'll be back and we will reconvene in five minutes.
Alright, so we're gonna call the meeting back to order. Okay, thank you. So now, we're going to action plans for learning, which is 8.1.2.
Thank you Chair Megan Dyckman. And so in terms of action plans for learning, I'm pleased to see that we've got two ladies out here tonight to speak to this in terms of examples, in terms of Lisa Lansbury and Kendra Semenetto, both principals in the district. And Woody will do more formal introductions there, but just a little history before he delves into the framework of it and examples. For those that aren't familiar, these used to go by the name of school plans. And that was a time of SPCs, and there wasn't a lot of traction there in terms of trying to get staff to really buy into these documents. And meanwhile, the purpose was is what's going on in terms of your building as a staff to move learning forward to help kids? So when the SPC is dissolved, what it was is a new opportunity to try and draw teachers into this process, which were critical. And the rest of the staff, obviously, also to make these things happen. So Mike Pugh, currently a district principal for Aboriginal programming, he said, let's, he put a revision on it, action plans for learning. And that's the, what, and that has evolved in the framework. But what I really appreciate in terms of is, is we'll walk through a little bit of the structures, it really aligns nicely because we have a strategic plan. We have district goals, we've asked that those be included in terms of the school action plans, and they're part of the growth plans in terms of professional growth plans for administrators also, to tie it all together. And at least now, it's not something that just sits in an administrator's office that they crank out a couple of weeks before the end of the year because someone's coming along. It is something that they have ongoing conversations with staff because that's going to ultimately make the greatest difference in terms of the learning. So I'm pleased with the direction that it's taken and look forward to tonight's presentation. And I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Woody Bradford.
Just in terms of setting the stage for the presentation this evening, it's an exciting time in our district in terms of moving learning forward for all our students in our, in our buildings through different structures that we're using. Our framework for enhancing student learning, which we're all familiar with, is really our learning map of what we're trying to accomplish in really student success, professional growth for our staffs in our buildings, and also community engagement. And so when you think of those three things, and you think about the learning map around the framework for enhancing student learning, how do we build structures or specific drivers in place to capture the learning that happens? So when you go on the journey and you go on the story with your school, how do you capture those stories to be able populate this map in a way that we're having success? So as a, as a team, we are using three different drivers for that success. And we are using our district action plan as a main focus in terms of what we're trying to do to filter all the learning through this around literacy and successful transitions. Our school action plans are populated at the school level and then drive into our district action plan. So literacy and successful transitions are moving in our schools into our district action plan. And then our leadership growth plans are examples of practice that our principals and vice principals are using to improve their instructional leadership, to support teachers in the classroom, and learning for students each and every day. So these three drivers are continually working together to really tell the story of our learning map for our students and our schools in terms of the success we're happening. Within these three drivers are eight elements of change. And Kendra and Lisa tonight will take us on a journey in terms of their success they're having in both of their schools and share with you some examples of practice that they've been working on through the eight elements of change to actually populate their school action plan to drive the learning forward in both communities. A huge amount of success in both of these communities, the work they're doing. So I'm really excited tonight to be able to have them here for them to share with you what they're doing in both their schools to support their students, their staff, and their community.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Semenetto. I am the principal at James Hill Elementary. And this is Lisa Lansbury. She is the principal of James Kennedy Elementary. We've already spoken about the fact that there are the different components that are intertwined. The district action plan, the enhancement agreement, the school action plans, and the professional growth plans. All of those intertwined really leads to the alignment that happened this year. If I were to use one word, it would be alignment. And the alignment not only happened through the strategic plan, but it also happens through the professional development opportunities that have been provided. And you'll see them noted here with our focus on assessment, professional conversations, and instructional leadership. So with the lens of alignment, we'd like to share with you some of our stories of success and what we're really proud of at our school this year through our action plans. And the eight elements of change, the eight elements of success are going to be our framework that we're going to kind of carve out the pathway for you to engage in what we, what we went through and what we've been able to accomplish this year. Lisa?
Great, thank you. So the Aboriginal Education Enhancement Agreement states that the most important work that we do is when we focus on the student. So how can we better serve the students in Langley School District? How can we support all of our students in their learning? And how can we support the staff members who are working with these students to increase their achievement? The goal of the Aboriginal Education Enhancement Agreement is to establish trusting, respectful partners, partnerships between the schools, the school district, and the Aboriginal community. Acknowledging our shared responsibility to help students reach their full potential. The work is embedded in classrooms in the delivery and experience of the curriculum. One of the first people's principles of learning is, learning is embedded in memory, history, and story. So we're here tonight to share our story, share experiences from the year from both schools. And we want to take you on a journey and invite you to enjoy the memories and story that our staff and students have experienced this year. The district vision of an innovative, inspiring, and unified learning community is the compass for decision-making to guide us toward our destination. We keep it in our sights to move our schools forward. As we align our work in our buildings and throughout the district and continue to develop our vision, it's the compass that keeps us moving in the right direction. So these are the roads that we can take. The district purpose is to inspire all learners to reach their full potential, 100% of our students. Our destination is the same throughout our district, but we might be taking different roads to get there depending on the school we're in. So our map is what we need to create, and that's our action plan for learning. It's built by the staff as a response to the needs in our community. In our action plan for learning, our school vision helps us look at the data, which is the past, dig into the present with our staff and community, and plan for the future. Our growth plans, as stated before, help us as building leaders reflect on our own learning journey and make connections to work, to the work we are doing in our schools to impact student learning.
As we mentioned before, there are eight elements to the framework for the action plan for learning. Vision is the first one, and the next two are community and team. When September came and we met our staffs and we walked into the first staff meeting, one of the first things we started talking about was this action plan. As a new administrator in my school, I had to learn about the community. I was the learner. So engaging in that conversation, and we went, and incidentally, Lisa and I both ended up doing coincidentally was we took the eight elements, spread them around the room, and asked staff to engage in what they thought would be beneficial for our students moving forward for the year. And team was one of the most interesting ones. When we, the question was asked, who should be on the team to develop the action plan for learning? Their response was the same in both of our communities. We all should. We are all James Hill. We are all James Kennedy. And so with that conversation, we engaged in the, the journey towards our action plan where all members of staff, all parts of our community, of our building, engaged in that planning. Now, community is the next piece. Community is where we are able to bring people in. We want to create opportunities for our parent community to join in our learning, our learning in the building. We want to engage in our community, extended community coming into the building as well. There's a lot of ways that we've been able to do that. We've invited families in for Family Literacy Week, POPS, Drop Everything and Read Days. We've invited grade 12 student leaders from LSS to come in and work with our kids and build that leadership connection. We've had chances for parents to come in and learn about some of the social emotional supports that we are learning in the zones of regulation. Marvelous Mornings is another way that we've invited families every morning. They can come in, they can join, bring their children, and they can start the day half an hour before the bell goes to engage in an activity and connect with their child and have a soft start to the day. So these communities is bringing parents in, but it's also the aspect of connection. We want to make sure that parents understand that the school and the home are intertwined. We are all supporting our children, and they are all our children. And the final piece is communication. Community means communicating to our, our partner groups, making sure that we're making it accessible for everyone. Do our parents understand our action plan? Do they understand how they can engage in the action plan? Do they understand how they can support from home? And that's part of the responsibility of us as our team to communicate that out. So the next video is going to show a little bit of how we did that. We created a student-focused video for our parent community to sort of explain the action plan for learning and share it with others when we started the year.
... elementary's action plan for learning. James Hill Elementary is part of the Langley School District, which resides on the unceded traditional territories of the Kwantle, Kaiti, Masque, and Samian First Nations.
James Hill is a neighborhood school located in beautiful Mooreville, BC. Our school has 296 students from kindergarten to grade five. Our motto is, "Where you belong."
In the Langley School District, each school creates an action plan for the learning that supports the district framework for enhanced student learning. The district goals this year are around literacy and graduation completion rates.
To align with district goals, our school has two action plan goals, literacy and social emotional learning.
Our first goal is around literacy. We aim to improve the overall number of students reading at grade level through early intervention, small group instruction, teaching reading powers, and a balanced literacy approach that celebrates and shares our joy for reading.
At James Hill, we intend to focus on balanced literacy instruction. Through literacy centers, small group instruction, shared reading, and teaching the reading powers. Connect, question, visualize, and explore and transform.
We love to share the joy of reading every day at James Hill. Families read together, intermediate student leaders read with primary readers and reading buddies share stories. With these strategies, we hope to see every reader improve.
Our second goal for our action plan for learning is to focus on our social emotional learning by teaching the zones of regulation to the whole school. Our focus is to help all learners become self-aware to manage their emotions through strategies and be ready to learn each day.
In this school, our classes practice peace circles to build community and respectful relationships while developing empathy. We offer relaxing break rooms and in-class call spaces to help students return to the green zone, which is best for learning. We share all of this learning with families so they can use these strategies at home as well.
At James Hill Elementary, staff work together with families to create enhanced learning opportunities for all students. With our combined efforts and supports, we hope to see an improvement in literacy rates and social emotional well-being for all our students. James Hill, where you belong.
So as we mentioned before, alignment was the key word. I would describe this year as having, with the district supports through professional development, that was possible. There were certain specific learning target, learning opportunities for administrators and for teachers that were provided by the district, including professional conversations, which provides the how to engage in positive collegial conversations. We also had the work with assessment literacy, ensuring that all educators understand the importance of success criteria, learning intentions, and the importance of formative assessment so that we can learn where students are at and move all learners forward. Also, the educational leadership piece, which was an opportunity for all of us as administrators to understand how we can engage in conversations with our staff and learn more about what our students need. Finally, we also had a balanced literacy approach from the district. The Adrian Gere series was provided, and many, both Lisa and I went there with our teams of staff, about six in my staff, and I think even more for Lisa, where we went and learned about reading powers and how we can implement them into our classrooms. And the, the learning was so practical at these sessions, teachers literally implemented things the next day. So it was very powerful. And also, we had learning walks where principals were able to learn more about what students are experiencing and what we can do more as administrators to understand our learners' needs. And learning walks were really powerful for us this year as administrators. But the superintendents also practiced the same thing. They were coming to our schools, to every school, they made three site visits and spent half a day with our, our school communities, going into classrooms, conducting learning walks, seeing kids in action, and being able to talk to us, learning what our needs are, where we're going, where is our next steps? And that was a really, really interesting experience, and I found it very powerful, particularly as a brand-new administrator. I found that relationship really powerful for me, and I felt very supported in that process. So professional learning starts in the district, but then it goes into your own schools. In James Hill, the pictures on the top speak to some of the professional learning opportunities we sought out. The district coaches are an important tool that we are able to access on a regular basis. And we had district coaches come into our school many times this year. They helped us with our guided reading and having our entire grade four, five team trained to align in their practice for guided reading, which is small group instruction for literacy. They also, we also engage in a book study with administrators. We conducted site visits. I'll speak to that a little bit later with our action plan for learning grant. And we also had an opportunity where we had district coaches come in and train us on reading power in addition to the Adrian Gere series. So our team brought the learning back, and then we had the coaches implement that even further so that the whole staff was sharing the same professional development.
It is, we embarked on our professional learning at James Kennedy, some of the examples on the lower line there. One of the first was the language learning, the learning of Helkamalum, French, of course, being a dual track, French version and English goal. And then our ELL learners and our English learners, all finding different translations of key words that really supported our Diversity and Respect Week. The collaboration with the SEAs, them finding a common language in applying reading strategies when they're working with their vulnerable learners to have them use the correct language. And so us providing them with some professional learning. And it was really about us learning, learning alongside each other. With the pineapple chart, a pineapple chart is a structure that we have, I know, at James Kennedy and at James Hill. That's like a welcome chart. So I have this lesson that I would love to share with somebody, so please come into my classroom. Now, that sounds so cool. I'm going to come and watch. They sign up, and we find a way to cover classes so they can learn from each other. And then teacher-led workshops after school to teach those reading strategies to whichever staff member, SEA, Aboriginal culture worker, anybody who wants to come and learn from a colleague and go back and apply that learning to students. It's all about student learning and achievement. So student learning is another one of the eight elements of learning, and our collective goal is to benefit all learners. This is every single child in our school. So we know that every school has students with diverse abilities and students from diverse backgrounds. So this means every child, not only the child who learns easily. Our passengers in our cars as we go on this learning journey are our children, and each of them has their own story to tell. And each of them has their own success criteria in that story. So we need to listen to the children and learn about how they can be successful, learn about their strengths, learn about their passions, and learn about ways that they feel that they can demonstrate their learning. So we have the joyful literacy and early literacy for the younger students. And then moving from learning to read and reading to learn, accessing language and possibilities in our schools and in the district at all levels, K to 7. Along the top here is some examples of the primary. We know that there's a, an imperative to have all students reading before the end of grade three. So we know that there's a connection between success at the end of the grade three and successful transition out of grade 12. So we're really focused on having every child find success and meeting expectations in reading or as per their independent, their IEPs or their AIPs. So Daily Five is one of the first ways that our teachers have done that, is allowed for choice in the classroom for students to engage with literacy in print and so that they can work with targeted, targeted focused instruction with the students on a rotating basis. Word Works Daily is a new program in Langley School District this year, and it's a kindergarten phonemic awareness interactive program that they do on a daily basis, along with or instead of calendar to improve and build that foundation for literacy. And we've shown a marked improvement in our results from last year's KSPs to this year's KSPs already. Literacy centers, you'll see them in all primary classrooms at our school. Again, that's the engagement of literacy through play. And then the circle time inclusion, all students are invited into a circle. So whichever way they can communicate and build those oral language skills, it's a, it's a beautiful thing to see. Of course, we have the diverse backgrounds in our schools. So we have examples from Orange Shirt Day where students explored ways of expressing why they matter. And identity projects from Diversity and Respect Week, students throughout the school created a project about something they're passionate about, to share their strengths and share their connection and build a sense of belonging in the school. And then opportunities for all being academic opportunities beyond the school day. So that's a reading link challenge experience there that welcomes a number of students who wouldn't necessarily be successful in a larger group or during the day for a longer period of time, but are finding success there. And then the word harvesting is an example of the K to 7 interaction with literacy. So as a school, we all know that literacy is everyone's, everyone's job. We all are teachers of reading, not just primary teachers, but all the way up to grade seven in English and French version.
So carrying on the journey for James Hill, we had similar pathways as James Kennedy in terms of making sure that we're serving all of our learners where they're at. One of the things that we realized is that the zones of regulation language was really beneficial because it created that shared language in the building. Students started to be able to identify not only their emotions, but then taking the next step to be able to self-regulate and use strategies to bring themselves back into a zone, the zone for learning or the green zone. The guided reading platoons organically happened this year. It actually wasn't in the original part of our action plan. But when we started to, as the year progressed, we started to realize that the grade four, five team had a keen interest in learning more about guided reading and how to implement it. So the grade four, five team now in third term through training with the district instructional coaches conducts guided reading platoons where students actually change into other classes of grade four, fives and conduct guided reading half an hour every single day from 2:00 to 2:30. So we're really excited about the implementation of that. Brain Gym was another thing that we decided as a staff that was really beneficial, and it's the first 15 minutes of every day at our school, Monday to Friday. Students are welcome to come into the gyms. Upwards of 80 students are in there in any given morning where they get to do full-body movements, then they get their energy out, and there's a calming session at the end, and they return to the classroom for calm learning. The Adrian Gere Reading Power, of course, we've talked about that a lot, and that has been something that we have really focused on, and the students are really enjoying the engagement in that metacognitive learning. The self-regulation strategies and choice, we're going to talk a little bit about space next. And that's where we're going to be able to highlight some of the self-reg pieces that we have implemented in our self-reg studio, which is recently launched at James Hill. that we have implemented in our self-reg studio, which has recently launched at James Hill. I'll dive into that in a minute. And really getting into the personalized learning and understanding what the passions are of our students. The middle bottom picture here is a picture of our kindergartens, and you might have heard a little bit about this. These kindergartens came up with the idea that they have a global impact, and they wanted to do something about it. They heard that some, some families don't have the same things that they do, and they wanted to make an impact. So they decided to fundraise, and they did a coin drive. They raised four hundred dollars for the coin drive, and they made posters, that was part of the literacy piece. They went around and spoke their oral language to all the school, all the classrooms, and made sure that they understood the coins. Then they took the coins, sorted the coins, added the coins, there's your numeracy. So you can see the cross-curricular core competencies coming to life there. And then they donated it to the school district foundation, walked over from James Hill and donated a giant check made by kindergartens. It's pretty powerful. So those sorts of projects that just come out of the desires of the kids are some of the richest learning opportunities, and they really do speak to the twenty-first century learners that we're, we're really fostering now. So speaking to environmental design, you'll see that picture of the self-reg studio, this recently launched at James Hill, and it was a project from the resource team. They came and they wanted to do something, so they actually conducted a site visit to Parkside to visit their self-reg studio. They saw it live in action, they brought all of the tools back, and they realized within probably six weeks, we were able to have the self-reg studio up and running, where the students understand, they check in, they identify their zone, they pick their choice activities that they'd like to engage in, in a circuit, they conduct the circuit, they put our old equipment back, and then they check out, hopefully in the green zone, and if they're not in the green zone, apply a new strategy. Reconsidering the spaces of our schools, it's important that we are always focused on using the space for students. How can we rethink our design? I know that Lisa, they, they rethought about how they could change storage so that they could make more space in the building for their student learning. Flexible seating is something, giving kids the choice over where they sit, where they occupy their space to conduct the learning that they do. Peace circles every day is a foundation of our school now, where students are engaging in that self-reflective process, engaging their zone, and being respectful to each other in the process, and making sure that we're providing opportunities for children to have in-class opportunities for calm time, and we are giving the outlet for that. So there are detours on the journey. It's not exactly a straight path, and sometimes the journey takes a detour because we actually get information from our students that might be different than we anticipated. As, just like a map and taking a pathway, it's never going to be exactly the same route. You might run into some turns that you need to take differently. Our measurement was another element that really helped us understand what next steps we had to take. The June data from last year fed our action plan for learning basic skeleton that we were able to build as we started working with our staff and the team to be able to create the action plan for learning document. But as first term came through and the, the data came through for our reading data, we were able to add additional supports, shift supports to the students that would need the extra, additional support in, in the reading interventions. We were able to do that, and then second-term data showed a different increase. That implementation really seemed to make a difference, which allowed us to shift again to be able to support the next group, which in, in our case was our grade four or five group, allowing us to go into that guided reading platoon that we talked about earlier.
So financial sustainability is the next element, and we were really grateful this year to be able to partake in the applying and accepting a grant at both our schools that would support our action plan for learning. So our action plan for learning grant was used at James Kennedy to build literacy, being something that we wanted to focus on K to seven and develop more alignment within the school. So our aim was to create more joyful literacy environments at both the primary and the intermediate level. And so we took eight of our teachers to a literacy summit in Vancouver, and they spent the time together to align their pedagogical thinking and really have good professional conversations about what is literacy success in the classroom. Upon return to the school, they had a budget to spend on their classroom at whatever they saw fit, so either classroom library, adding to their classroom library, or home reading books for students, or creating literacy centers in their classroom, depending on what the need that they felt was for their students. The goal really was to align our K to seven learners, both English and French immersion, and we felt like we did that successfully through our grant.
Our action plan for learning grant was two-part. The first one, the staff identified that there was a desire for, there was a lot of good work happening, but we wanted to create more team. So through the idea of collective efficacy, making sure that we, do we have a shared belief in how we can impact students to, to make student learning improve, we did site visits. So eight different staff members in different pockets of teams of two or more, applied with an inquiry question about one of our action plan for learning goals, and asked if they could go to a site and see learning in action, see systems in action, students live in the building, rather than going to a, a location where there are no kids and you're learning about something, they're actually seeing it live. The learning that came back from those site visits, eight different people, several different teams, five different sites were visited. The Brain Gym came straight out of that experience from their site visit. It was an SEA who led that and came back with the passion of, I want to do this, this speaks to me, sought out the training, found the, we provided the supports, we figured out, it's she, she initiated the program, which was really powerful. We had our, our calm kindergarten mornings was a, a direct result of our site visits to another school, and also our self-reg studio. The implementation of the self-reg studio was a direct result from our site visits. So the learning that happened from those was really powerful. The final portion of our action plan for learning grant, we used to provide supports for the learning that happened from the site visits. So as the ideas came back and we realized as a staff which direction we wanted to go as a team to support student learning, we bought the resources to make that happen, such as reading powers for all, all the classrooms and other resources as well. So as you can see, the final destination is the shared vision. We want to support the district action plan for learning goals through literacy and successful completion. We're on our journey, we aren't, we aren't complete, the journey is not complete, I don't know if it's ever complete. It's a living, breathing document that is constantly happening in our buildings, constantly being reflected upon, constantly changing. And the original document that happened in the fall has changed since then, but many of the things that were on the original document have been met. So as we take turns, and sometimes we might hit a flat tire, and we have different pathways, we're still heading in the same direction, and the compass of the district vision is heading, taking us there.
Wonderful, thank you. That was a fantastic presentation, and it was full of so much information, and I really appreciate you both coming here tonight to share this. I mean, this really is what the work of the district and the board is about, is coming together for student success and, and making sure that students have the best experience, and your presentation really highlighted amazing things going on in our district. I do have a speaker's list now. I admittedly, I hadn't scratched the last one, so I have Suzanne, our trustee Perot, and then Vice Chair Coburn. Am I correct on that? Okay, did you have your hand up? Okay, so it's written in the first box, I have to assume I was right, so I have trustee Perot, and then I have Vice Chair Coburn, and trustee Ross, and trustee Todd. Boxes are not in the right order, I'm sorry, but you are on the list. Okay, so trustee Perot.
Thank you. I, I have so many words. I am so excited by your presentation. I am humbled to receive it, thankful to hear it. This is like my dream come true for our schools. If we can duplicate in all our schools, then that would be like, if I can approve the budget, it'd be done. So I just wanna say that, thank you. Lovely, lovely, lovely presentation. I love success for all students, focusing on the students and it's creating alignment, and that you're pulling team, community. That parent piece is critical, and I applaud you guys for pulling them in and making a concerted effort to bring them on the same page with you on what self-reg looks like and what the language looks like, so that they understand what you're saying, they can take it home and practice, because if you're doing it in the classroom, the kids are going home, and they got these great tools, but they don't know how to articulate it to mom, and dad aren't aware of what self-reg is, then you're spinning your wheels, and it's absolutely brilliant that you're creating that foundation, literally, with the parent and the educator lift up that student to success, because it's gonna reduce mental health issues for staff, it's going to increase parent-teacher communication, and at the end of the day, it creates an incredible amount of trust, and I'm just thrilled to hear this, absolutely thrilled. I love the circle room, I love that. That circle time, no head, no tail, like wow, how amazing is that? And the other thing, so really, I'm just giving a lot of thoughts, I don't really have a question, but I love it all, I'm excited. Mel has heard my heart on ears in a lot of this stuff, and I thank you to the assistant supes for spending time at the school, supporting our staff, that's critical, that our staff know they're supported by you in these important visions, because the trickle-down effect impacts our budget, and it's really, really fabulous. I would love the privilege at some point to come and view this room. I'm excited about it, and I'm really interested, what is it gonna take for you guys to keep moving forward? You talked about these, these, these grants, and that threw up an alarm for me, because I, I would not wanna see something like this, and in fact, I'd like to see it duplicated throughout the district. This is, when we look at social-emotional outcomes as a foundational tool, and we capture our students' hearts, then we get them learning, and that always has to be number one. So I would love to understand, what is it gonna take for you guys to see this move forward, as you continue to reflect and then vision ahead?
Thank you, trustee Perot. I have Vice Chair Coburn, and then I...
Do Superintendent Bradford and Superintendent Gill wanna speak to the action plan for learning grant piece for the fall?
So the action plan for learning grant, there's a couple of parts about that. See, the, the district has set aside some money, and, and the schools apply for that money. This year, we've actually had our teacher leader, in our teacher leadership series, we've had a number of our teachers who, who have applied for that grant through their administrators, and have actually just presented to, to a group of adminis, sorry, peers and, and some of us just yesterday. And we've heard a number of different grants already, and they'll come forward as part of the, the grant proposals for next year. All of the grants have to be connected to the action plan, and should support the action plan specifically, and in addition to that, hoping that we build more traction with the action plans by have, by increasing the, the number of people on the team that feel like they can, they have some, some, some support for one another to, to move the action plan forward.
Can I answer that as well? So two of my teachers were, are part of the leadership series, and they were, they did that yesterday, and the exciting part for me, really encouraging, is they came to me a few weeks ago with knowing that they were going to be doing this, and they came and said, we know that the action plan for learning grant process has really benefited our students this year, and we wanna add to it, and so they are taking a social-emotional learning layer on top of what we're already doing. And they went to the staff and said, what do we need, what do we want in our school? And so it really is a collaborative process, and they presented their proposal yesterday to have training in a universal, it's a, it's a research-based program called Second Step that allows all students to learn and understand how to interact with their peers and self-regulate through that process. So it's exciting that the teacher leaders are taking on this opportunity now and coming, coming to me and hav, having that opportunity to do so, and building from within.
Right, thank you, so Vice Chair Coburn, and then after that, trustee Ross.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that it's not typical to get a clap after your presentation. It's not typical. So that speaks to the outstanding presentation that you have delivered. I'll take twenty of you. Kendra, Mrs. Simonetto, you already know that I'm so fond of you, I wish my son could have had you for twelve straight years through his school education. So I do have a question in here, not just gushing about how awesome you are. So I love your approach in, in everything. It's so centered around the, the child and the student and their own agency. So much of public education has been for kids to just sit and get in line, you don't get to choose where you sit, all of this, and then you graduate and you have all this freedom, it's a nightmare. So you're instilling agency in them, and you're allowing them to exercise it, and I think that's really powerful. And it kinda leads to this, to the second part, which is the self-reg studio. I love it. And so I have a bunch of questions I'm gonna fire at you about it, but they're easy. So I would love you to tell me about, about the self-regulation studio, like with a little more detail, and should we be looking at this strategy district-wide? And I want to understand what about this studio that is so critical, and what are the benefits to it and why? Why would we want this? Because often, we think the solution to our problems is more bodies or more money, and I don't know if that's the case, I think it's, you have to work smarter. And what you've demonstrated is extreme innovation and so much thought around it, and I don't think it's overly expensive, I think it's a question of initiative. So I'm wanting you to speak a little bit more about it, what it looks like, what it entails, what the cost might be, and in your opinion, is this something that we should be having in all of our schools?
Well, I certainly can't take any credit for the idea, as we said, it was from a, it spawned from an idea from another school in, in Langley. The self-reg studio is a proactive structure, that's the intent. It is meant to be built into a student's day who likes to, who benefits from big body movements as a way to exert energy and retain the calm for learning environments. So it is a proactive structure in the schedule, and students will have groups, often, eh, anywhere from three to five students at a time will engage in the self-reg studio. Sometimes we partner older students with younger students for that leadership piece, and the older students will teach the younger students, and they'll go in and they'll often have a staff member with them. They'll engage in the identification of their zone, they'll do their, their agency and indicate what their choices are for the activities. Inside the studio, there's an array of things. We now have a rock climbing wall for lateral rock climbing, we have a rowing machine, we have a trampoline, we have a stationary bike, we have a stepping machine, we have heavy ropes. So, and that's, this is, we're sort of in the infancy stage of this, we launched it third term here since March. So, and then students will indicate the circuit, it is timed, they know that they have to respect the equipment, it's a very structured, very respectful environment, and at the end of it, they indicate what zone they're in. If they're not in the green zone, then we ask them the strategies they need to be able to be in the green zone, which is the green zone for learning. So that's the system that exists. Typically, students are in there for about five to eight minutes, not, not, not a ton of time. Speaking to the students that you're, you're asking, how does it benefit students? The students that we have had, some students don't enjoy it, some students find it elevates them and makes them a little, like, hyper to return to class. So they have self-acknowledged, it's not a successful strategy for them. Other students have said it is absolutely necessary for them to be successful during the day, and they'll actually ask at times, can I go to the self-reg studio with a, with a person, just because I'm feeling, I'm feeling too much in the yellow zone, I'm feeling too, too much in the red zone? And so they identify, they use it through the system, and it seems to really make a difference. I think there are some children that really benefit from that big body exertion. We've also extended it out with our occupational therapist, we worked with him to design an outdoor playground circuit, so intentionally designing a plan of using the playground equipment to move all four part, for main body parts, and the occupational therapist has designed, designed that as well. So taking kids outside and also using that space in a different way. Did that answer all your questions?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Now trustee Ross.
Thank you. It's good to see your smiling faces again. And I, trustees, doesn't this make you wanna go back to elementary school, specifically James Kennedy? Like, come on. This is all amazing stuff. I, I mean, I really do wish I had this kind of an experience when I was in your, in school. We're always looking for good people. You guys are good people. You can go anywhere, any school district, I'd be thrilled to have you. Why Langley?
I can switch that. I, I really believe in the relationship. I I I really um believe in the relationship and connection with people and that that breeds really good work and really um strong that le- leads leads to leads to really strong relationships and that builds that. I'm just getting a little bit emotional about it. The the Langley family has been incredible to me and in my journey of coming to the district. And you know, meeting great people. But I I really believe that that comes from a lot of hard work in building a culture that is respectful. I can tell like in this room, there's a respectful culture and the interaction between people. And um that that trickles down. You can feel that throughout the district. Um James Kennedy is a school that every single person in the building matters. Um and sometimes when people come to school, they don't, they're not able to bring their best self. But no matter what they bring, they're cared for and they're welcomed and they're offered assistance shall should they need it. And I'm just really grateful to be part of a district that puts these values into play every day, really works to build community. And um does that through the relationships and and the culture that they're you're obviously working hard to build.
I think Langley is forward-thinking. I think they're carving the path. So um in terms of leadership style, I believe that the district leadership team encourages innovation, encourages creativity. Because what we do for our students, they're modeling for us as administrators. And it just allows me to focus on continuing to de- develop my strengths, but also seeking out ways to uh develop my my stretches. And I can take risks because I know I'm in a safe community that is going to support me through the journey and believe in what I am capable of doing. And it's not us and them, it's a we.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Uh Trustee Todd.
So um somebody once said, true leadership um becomes symbiotic. And uh both of you, what you've displayed tonight, it has been true leadership. You've shown that you're not afraid to take some risks. Uh you've shown that you're bold and you're courageous. And and I like that. You're both new in a situation and you're willing to just kind of abandon that whole and 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 become, you know, powerful leaders in that moment. So I appreciate that. And some of the things I know Trustee Ward has talked about acronyms and we talk about action plans for learning. So is that APL? Is that Apple? Um it's another good acronym for education. I the zones of regulation, very effective. The terminology, speaking about it, embedding it in in the kids' lives, both at school and at home. You talk about pops, the involvement of parents, to just pop in uh as well when I think of community grandparents too. Anybody that's, you know, involved, sometimes it may or may not be a parent, you know, it could be an elder. I love the fact that your constant communication, you talk about alignment, your living alignment. All the money that went into, you know, this, you you've shown that it came in a good cause. I do have, well, and talk about collaboration. We we, you know, we wrestled with collaboration a while ago and we uh but this was true collaboration. I like the fact that you weren't you weren't afraid or you didn't have all the answers. As a matter of fact, you allowed the people around you to give those answers by going into other schools. And that really kind of that freed them. Because sometimes, believe in our educators can be positional. And that freed them to uh be out there. I do have one question because as I recently learned at our policy review, it's all about enhancing student learning. So I know it would only be preliminary. But what's it looking like for that our our goals around education, around that literacy? Like I I know the social emotional is going to come along and it's a core competency, so it'll be there. But just around literacy, have you seen any early rudimentary results?
So when we talked about the measurement piece and we talked a little bit about the pivot that happened as a result of the data from first term. The data from first term to second term, where we applied those interventions and took that pivot, indicated that there were about twenty-six students in our student in our in our scoo- student population from grades one to five that went from not yet meeting expectations to meeting expectations. Uh and most of them were in the grade two, three realm. So that's a significant gain uh in terms of our population. It's about eleven percent. And so for us, that was a significant measure that that intervention worked. And then we were applying a similar intervention through the guided reading process to the intermediate range.
Um my example that I have is that we did um and we we looked at the term one data for and noticed that our grade two students were our struggling learners in in the building. So we we took a s- similar turn and we decided we need to blitz this group. And we polled um we just looked, we pulled all our research team together and said, how are we going to meet their needs? And we had five students go from not yet meeting expectations to minimally meeting expectations over one term. So.
Thank you. Uh the last speaker I have on the list is uh Trustee Ward.
I don't want to, okay. Uh I love what you're doing. Uh it's it's fantastic. What is it called again? Uh is it the is it the Self Reg Studio where they're doing something active? Okay.
Yeah, Self Reg. At our school, we we have somewhere called Move Room.
Okay.
So it it's it just is named differently depending on schools.
I I I mean, I I've talked about this before at other meetings. I think it's fantastic. In general, you're doing something where you're touching a lot of different aspects for student learning. But with high-energy kids, uh my daughter's one of them at twelve years old and a lot of boys, quite frankly, and I was one, I am still. But uh high energy is good to do active things and get the brain in. And it's nice that you're looking at it from two perspectives. One is uh some kids need it and or or it might help them with learning. It definitely did my daughter. Uh and then uh and then some kids, it might create, you know, up up the blood pressure or whatever and may not be conducive. So that's really good. The self-regulation, I I love it. With respect to one one uh quick question, you mentioned the word metacognitive learning. So I quickly Googled it. I'm like, oh, yeah, it's uh thinking about thinking kind of it's like philosophy to some degree. So can you speak to that, what it means?
I can speak to it. I believe you used the term, but do you want me to speak to it?
I did. So it that's that's a direct correlation to the Adrian Gier reading powers. So her five reading powers that she uh that we can teach from K all the way through can be utilized for students to create an active brain while they're reading. And by utilizing those powers, they are thinking about what their brain is doing while they're reading the text. So it is based on metacognition as a as a freight, like a baseline. And then the the powers are a kid-friendly way of kids understanding that they're thinking about thinking fosters their own learning. Does that make sense?
Um well, and and to reference Adrian Gier, to move from thinking to understanding, so thinking about what you're doing to really understanding about what you're doing, or thinking about what you're studying and 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 learning to um really deeply understanding that. So um but it's about it's about the ownership that the student takes of their learning and, you know, to feed that at a young age and carry that through.
Well, thank you. And thank you again for this fantastic presentation. As you heard, we were we were all quite blown away by uh the detail and the excitement and the wonderful things going on in our district. So thank you and we look forward to having you back again for an update.
Thank you very much.
Great night. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So trustees, we are on to um, well, actually, we need a motion for our superintendent's items for information. So could I please get a mover that the Board of Education receives the superintendent's information item reports as presented, moved by Trustee Ross, seconded by Trustee Wilson. Any other comments or questions on that? All those in favor? Okay, so we're now on to um, I'm sorry. The locally approved titles, which is an item that was pulled from our consent agenda. So I'm just going to give the superintendent um moment to come back. And then I'm going to hand it over to Trustee Todd, who had some questions that he wanted to raise about locally approved titles.
Hi, maybe I uh I'm not sure if this is for the superintendent or or who's in charge of locally approved titles. Um I just uh found it somewhat ironic in reading through it all that ten of our twelve, the producer or publisher was Amazon. And I'm just, is that an indicator? I wasn't aware that Amazon is producing most of the new educational material.
Trustee Ward.
Okay, good. Okay, okay. Um with with respect to locally approved titles as well, I had a question I ca- um thought of, um mentioned um uh there's a rigorous uh says uh the background, it says the Ministry of Education determines the evaluation criteria for learning resources, both at the provincial and local level. Each board is required to have local approved pro- uh approval process that aligns with this criterion. In the Langley School District, a rigorous four-stage evaluation process is applied to all submitted resources. And then it it notes six bullet points that are not uh the rigorous four-stage evaluation. So my question is, the the paragraph that follows that, uh it does mention e- evaluation by the submitting educator, principal approval, in-depth evaluation by instructional services aligned with the Educational Resource Acquisition Consortium and First Nations Education Steering Committee Resource Evaluation Practices. My question is, the four-stage evaluation process, is that pertaining to or that other that other paragraph or is it somewhere else? So and it does it make sense?
So thank you, Trustee Ward. Uh yeah, so the what it is, the four stages at the bottom, what they say is that's kind of the criteria, the lens they look at when those four groups are assessing, you know, whether the resource is something that would be appropriate in determining what grade level and what warnings to put on it.
All right, thank you. I I don't see any um for the questions on that. The item wasn't an action item, it was a question, so we can move on from there. So the next item on our agenda is a motion which Trustee Todd was bringing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Uh good evening, audience members. So I'm bringing a very pertinent and important motion before the Langley School Board this evening. Stirred on by my work on the LGBTQ committee. According to recent provincial statistics from two thousand and seventeen, lesbian, gay, and bisexual youth were seven times more likely than heterosexual youth to attempt suicide. The Canadian Institute of Health Research cited the rate of discrimination of students who identify as LGBTQ is three times higher than heterosexual youth. This discrimination often carries on throughout society, including community spaces and workplaces. For all of us, the importance of seeing oneself reflected and celebrated in society increases our sense of self-worth, societal belonging, and overall mental health. I did have, and it was a, I had over fifty, but I confirmed as of September two thousand and eighteen, forty-three communities around B C have installed rainbow crosswalks as a powerful message of inclusion. As a vibrant and diverse community, Langley has the opportunity to pair a highly visible symbol of inclusion with a commitment to greater understanding and acceptance. Therefore, tonight I move the Langley School Board work with the RCMP, the township of Langley, to create a rainbow crosswalk adjacent to the RCMP and school board office at the present crosswalk. There, just out there. And as I said, this motion arises from my work on the board LGBTQ committee.
Would you like to continue to speak to your motion?
And it's something that I I've considered for a while and it just uh, the idea came along. And uh certainly for next year, we talked about how we can move our committee forward and and I think it's an important next step.
Are there any other speakers to this motion? Trustee Ward?
Yeah, uh would we want to dialogue with the township with respect to um protocol and and that sort of thing?
Yes, um I believe that in um and I know it's unfortunate it wasn't projected, but that um the last paragraph says that I move that the Langley School just school board work with the RCMP and the township of Langley to create a rainbow crosswalk adjacent to the RCMP and school board office at the present crosswalk on two twenty-two. So I believe that, of course, with as you were going to raise, it would have to go through the township as it's a road. Do you have a follow-up question or comment on that?
Yeah, I I do uh as well. I mean, obviously, I, everything you said there and uh, you know, there is very true. The the rates of um not that you want people to feel included and reflected in society, and I agree one hundred percent with that. And the rates of suicide and suicidality are very, very high. So um of course, that's very concerning to me. With respect to painting a crosswalk, yeah, I don't I don't I don't know if that will serve the intended purpose in in my estimation. I I, you know, and I come from a municipal background with respect to um with respect to design standards and traffic standards and things like that. So that's the way I look at it from just a kind of a functional standpoint. Uh same thing with all other kind of design features and and things like that. But uh I I appreciate what you're saying and I think we need to value all students and uh and all people, so.
Are there any other speakers to the motion? Okay, saying no further speakers, the um motion that is on the floor is that I move that the Langley School Board work with the RCMP and the township Langley to create a rainbow crosswalk adjacent to the RCMP and school board office at the present crosswalk on two twenty-second Street. The motion has been moved and seconded and I see no further speakers. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion is carried. Motion coming forward, but Trustee Ross has indicated he would like to pull it off this agenda. Is that correct? Thank you. And then the third um motion is a motion related to the Langley Teachers Association. So it's more of a motion that's come out of in camera, which we're able to bring forward. So we met with the Langley Teachers Association um just this week. And we spoke about uh joint uh concerns and opportunities that exist to discuss with the funding formula. And each of the groups have individually discussed or sent letters to the ministry. But the Langley Teachers Association approached the board to work together with um partners. And they would reach out to all of the different partners to see if there would be an opportunity to um work together to send a joint letter. Uh from that uh dinner, which was quite lovely and and on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you again for coming to meet with us. The conversation was excellent. Of course, boards speak in motions, so we had to come back and and have a motion on whether we could send the letter. So um we're very happy to report that we came back. We discussed it. And the motion that was passed was that the Langley Board of Education uh work with the Langley Teachers Association and partners to send a letter. So we will send you something formal to that effect, but we just wanted to announce tonight that uh the board was uh was supportive of working together for a letter. So, all right, on that, uh that concludes the new business. Uh we do now have trustee uh comments. And so I will start um on my far right and go to Trustee Ward.
Not a lot of comments, a lot of lot of excellent presentations tonight, a very fantastic night, actually, with all our different presenters from the improv group and all the different with all our different presenters from the improv group and all the different couple of video videos that were done in the school district. We have a lot to be proud of, so.
Trustee Pearl.
Yeah, really, really thankful for our presenters tonight as well. And a bit of a punctuating point was how the presenters, the last one specifically, identified culture of respect and the importance of culture of respect. Respect builds community and it's a path for us. And as a board, that's how we need to operate as a we. And I was very encouraged by that and that we operate as a we on all aspects and all that we do, regardless of our decisions. And I was very encouraged that our educators are feeling that support and definitely by virtue of our assistant superintendent's good work in the schools. And so I just want to again reiterate my appreciation for that and bringing that down and breathing life into our schools because that impacts our students. And so again, I thank you for that. And I'm very thankful for the presentation we've received. Thank you.
Vice Chair Coburn.
I have lots of thoughts.
Trustee Wilson.
As I have lots of thoughts too and comments in the interest of saving people time and sparing them from prolonging this meeting any longer than it already is, I will just say thank you for coming.
Trustee Ross.
Well, I can't follow that. I got to talk, say something. No, this evident that, you know, we have a wonderful district and we have an amazing leadership team and amazing facilities as well. And I just, once again, want to say how much I love this district and I love the people in it. This is a wonderful place to be. And I really do feel sorry for other districts. Like, I mean, really, gosh, it sucks to be Abbotsford, I mean, I mean, other places. Can we cut that out of the video? The live feed? Anyway, thank you very much. Just proud to be here. Thank you.
Trustee Todd.
Thank you. So we often talk about innovative, inspiring, unified. But tonight I want to just do shout out for gratitude. And I think that I'm grateful for where I live. I'm grateful for where my daughter gets to go to school. And I'm grateful for the people that educate her every day and for the leadership at her school. And I'm grateful all the way up to the superintendent. This is a great place to raise a child. Thank you.
Vice Chair Coburn.
No, I'm going to pull a Marnie. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to thank everybody who brought their presentations forward tonight and everybody who stuck right till the end with us. I know it was a longer meeting. And I'd like to just ask tonight that trustees, please stay back for five minutes. We just have a short in-camera meeting after. And I hope everybody has a fantastic evening. Thank you again for coming up. That's right, thank you. We actually, I jumped all over and sort of everybody was like, oh, it's been such a long evening. I forgot that, first of all, we have to give people an opportunity to have question period. So I'm so sorry. Question period is provided at board meetings for the public to ask questions of clarification. The board welcomes the public and wants to ensure that those wishing to ask questions can do so. The following will help the public develop questions for question period at a board meeting. They need to be directed to the chair and not to staff. And I see we do have a question tonight from Reverend Ron Lindsay. Would you please introduce yourself?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to just make this comment to you and all the other people, the board. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the trustees that pass this motion to our community. It's very much appreciated. Probably emotional for me, but we've lived it and walked it for many years, both in private and in public. But now, because of all of you, we can live openly. And that's a testimony to this community and a testimony to people that can say we can live again openly and transparently. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Ron. We appreciate you coming out and in your continuous support of the board and sharing of your feelings. And I know this is an emotional evening and I do thank you for for coming to share that. It really helps us understand as a board the people that the decisions affect. So thank you. Are there any other questions tonight? Okay, I don't see any. So now the first one was just a test run. Psych, so now we're going to ask for a motion to adjourn, moved by Vice Chair Coburn, seconded by trustee Wilson. All those in favor? Okay, so trustees could just stay back for five minutes.